So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 26 Town Council meeting. I really wanted to open with a moment of prayer and silence for the war that's raging in the Ukraine. And also for tomorrow, April 27th, Wednesday is a worldwide Holocaust Remembrance Day called Yom Shua. And also prayers and best wishes for our colleague to get well soon. Councilwoman Cindy Matute Brown, so feel better. She's going to plug through the meeting and feel better soon. Thank you, thank you all. So, Madam Clerk, can we start the meeting?
Yes. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24th, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman Catalina?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
You did.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. Madam Clerk. So, on our agenda this evening, we have, sorry, we have a presentation scheduled for the Sustainable Jersey Diversity of our Municipal Boards and Commissioners, our volunteer survey findings. So, just a little history. I have been the Sustainable Jersey Coordinator for the Township, and it is a series, it's a statewide program. It is a series of actionable items that we need to upload. We, as a township, as we move ahead on these green initiatives, we upload supporting documentation that these are in effect for our township. And Sustainable Jersey partnered with Montclair State. And one of the students happens to be a West Orange resident. Her name is Kimberly Hill. And she's here this evening because one of the priority actions, the program, you accrue points for all of the initiatives that you can implement or do implement. And we are at a bronze level. So, the more that we do, we can rise up to silver. And there are some municipalities that actually have teams of people that work on this, and they are at a gold standard. So, we are doing the best we can to accrue as many points as we can. And one of the actionable items on this list right now is a priority action to look at the survey of the diversity on our boards. So, I would like to introduce Kimberly here. And what I was really pleased, Kimberly, can you just give us a little background about your major and minors at Montclair State? And that I was really pleased that she also wants to serve on our Environmental Commission. So, the mayor pointed her there as well after this discussion that we are about to have.
Hello, good night, everybody. Thank you so much, Susan, for that wonderful introduction. So, I am a senior currently at Montclair State University. I major in political science, and I have a minor in global security and diplomacy, as well as environmental justice. I know, overachiever, no. So, it was very interesting to work with Sustainable Jersey. And then I met Susan, and it was such a nice fit. And she invited me onto the Environmental Commission, and I really appreciated that. And it was, you know, it was a calling for me because I love doing stuff to help our environment. Going forward, this survey was very interesting. It's just part of the initiative, like she said, to determine the diversity of our boards and commissions. I hope a lot of you here did actually complete the survey. It was somewhat straightforward, and I hope it gives us the answers that we need and what Sustainable Jersey needs as well. Did you want me to start the slideshow?
Megan should have. Are you going to share the screen?
I can do it, or if Megan wants to do it, that's fine. I don't know who.
No, you're fine, show the screen.
Thank you.
I have to do this here first. Okay, can we see it?
There we go.
Okay, so as we said, it's basically by Sustainable Jersey. And in order for us to, well, when we complete actions, it basically helps us move forward to get grants and whatnot, you know, for our town. There's a lot of, there's actually a lot of actions that we have to complete to really get everything going, which I told Susan, I'm more than willing to help with that going forward. It's, you know, I think it's just going to be, does anybody want to see the list of actions? Because I could click on this, or is this something you want to do at a different time?
I just click on it just so they could see it's an open screen to see how many items are actually on the program. They're all different categories. Maybe.
I'm sorry, it broke up a little bit.
Nope, all right.
I'm sorry. Hi, Paul.
Megan, I see that she is frozen.
I apologize, do you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Okay, welcome back, welcome back. Skip that one.
Can you screen it?
Nope, you have to go back to sharing the screen.
Gotcha, okay. Alrighty, so here are a, this is the multitude of actions, by the way, that has to be completed in order to, I guess, for us to achieve certain things. So, there's stuff in animals, arts, energy, brownfields, foods, diversity and equity, which is what we did, green design, health and wellness, operations maintenance, land use and transportation, sustainability, climate action, I mean, climate plan, waste management, natural resources. So, there is a fair share of things that need to be done for us to get to where we're going.
All right, so. Okay. This, yeah, this is the list of all of the boards that we have. Thank you to the mayor's office for sharing the rosters. And these were all done anonymously?
Yes, they were. So, this is basically a breakdown of everybody who actually participated in the survey. So, this is a breakdown of basically the, of who, you know, responded. For example, in my environmental commission, there was 10% historic preservation. There was 6%, and so forth, very straightforward. So, we, I compared it to the U.S. Census Bureau, and according to them, as of 2020, our town has a population of 48,843. And the breakdown is as follows. We have, you know, white alone, 52%, black or African American, 26% Native American, and so on. The reason I'm telling you this, because we're going to compare it again after. So, we have, you know, race and ethnicity, and this is in accordance with the survey that was taken. So, the Caucasian portion of the graph looks rather large. But again, if you go, if you look past at the U.S. Census Bureau, it makes sense. And then keep in mind as well, there was not 100% participation in the survey. So, the numbers may seem a little skewed. But I think it actually represents somewhat accurately as to how our boards, as far as the diversity goes. There was another question, you all obviously know that was non-Hispanic and Latino, or if you're of Latin descent. And of course, we had the age. I like this because it seemed that, you know, a lot of the board members were very seasoned. This is what I would like to say, so experienced in a way. And this, this is very becoming of our town, knowing that, you know, we have people who probably know what they're doing in the field. Again, so our education was very well put with the survey. A lot of people has like master's degrees, PhD, bachelor's degrees, at least a high school education, some college, a very good standpoint for us. So, with the U.S. Census compared to the survey, it, it matches, as you could see. You know, most people do have a high school degree, I mean, a high school diploma. And then everybody else, I think the U.S. Census just, just stopped at bachelor's degree. So, obviously, there is potential for it to be higher, like a PhD or masters. The gender portion, I was very pleased with this. I hope Sustainable Jersey would be pleased with this as well. It was almost 50/50, we were very proud about that. I think that's a big step towards diversity as well. And parental status, this was very interesting. A lot of people had dependent children. A lot of people had, you know, yes, it's true, there's a big gap between, with no dependent children. Again, the numbers are a little skewed. But this just proves that we do have people who have our best interests at heart because we have children, a lot of us have children in this town. And that, you know, helps with everything. Language, majority speak English, which was very good to know. And then we come to the hard questions. All members of my community have the opportunity to participate in board and commission's activities without regard to any identifying diversity characteristics. A lot of you agreed, a lot of you strongly agreed, this was a great sign. Then all of the members of my, I'm sorry, but. I think this was the same one. Okay, so my board and commission's colleagues treat me with respect and dignity. As you can see, a majority, almost three-quarter of the panel, they agreed, and they strongly agreed. Diversity is well represented on the boards and commissions. Most people agreed and strongly agreed. Differences of people are valued in my municipality. It was, you know, we had at least half of them agree, and then the rest strongly agree. Different cultures are welcomed in my municipality. Most of you strongly agreed or agreed. And if I'm going through this quickly, it's just, at the end, I'm going to give a little summary on certain things that needs to be addressed. My municipality actively recruits people from different cultures and backgrounds to serve on the boards and commissions. Many of you were neutral on this. This will be addressed in the end, as to some of the comments that were given. My municipality proactively encourages people of diverse, of different diversity characteristics with 10 meetings and activities. Again, it was neutral, and I, we will see why at the end. I understand the value of diversity. Many of you strongly agreed, I like that. It's glad to know that we agree on that. I am comfortable initiating diverse issues, conversations, discussions, questions, discourse with my colleagues in my chapter or state council. Many of you strongly agreed and agreed. Diversity is primarily about ethnicity and gender issues. Many of you disagreed, which is good because it is not just primarily about that, which is true. Sorry, one second. We're not switching. Was that the last one? Okay, that was the last one. That was it, okay. So, going forward, my final analysis is that I think our boards are very diverse. For, given the census of our town, it makes sense. In reference to some of the questions, such as if you have an inability to participate in the boards and committees, you know, as a parent myself, I do recognize that there are some constraints, especially if you have prior engagements. But we can all agree that the one positive that came out of COVID is that we could all get together and how using a Zoom link. And it's just the greatest thing you could come up with at this point. So, everybody kind of has a fair share to participate in any meetings or community activities if they really want to. Another thing that came up is the opportunities for diversity on the board. Somebody had actually recommended that we post the board positions on the website, which would actually be a good idea. I know, like, a lot of it is done through recommendations and whatnot, which is not a terrible thing, but just for more inclusivity, and I guess to have a more diverse, more diverse characteristics in the pool, we could actually just do that going forward. Overall, I think we did a good job as far as being diverse. I think that a lot of the issues, if you want to call it, that are adhered at this town. I was actually at the Human Resources, Human Relations Meeting last night, and they were doing many things to incorporate diversity and other things that are very relevant to us as a society right now. And that's a very positive thing. Is there any questions? Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Kimberly. I think what I was so pleased to find out after seeing the conclusions and even the recommendations is that it closely, it's so closely aligned with our census data.
Yes.
Which I, I think that's, that was.
Yes.
Very, that was commendable, yes, thank you. And that, you know, we know that the diversity of people equates to just that, a better representation of a diversity of ideas. So, I was pleased that it was just fairly laid out. Some of the comments that, that were made, that people did have the perception that the boards were not so fair, I guess. And seeing though it was not 100% of the surveys were returned, it did show that they are very well represented of our community. So, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Yes, I appreciate that. And we, you know, we do have, we have 11 schools, you know, we have a very family-oriented community. And another comment was people do want to get involved, but they have dependent children. And we saw that in that slide, that that was overwhelming.
Yes.
Any comments, any questions? Councilwoman?
Council President, I'm sorry, I, this is a, I, phrase function is here. Just wanted to make sure that we could get a copy of the.
Of course.
Yeah, that was really interesting. Thank you so much, Kimberly, for all of that information. It's, it's awesome. I, I do want to say, as we pushed the, the census count during a pandemic, considering a lot of Latino families, some who are residents who are undocumented, you know, there is some room for disparity in the count of the Latino population in West Orange. But I am happy that we had, we did so much better than we even anticipated as a response rate. So, thank you to all, and Kimberly, that, that's really awesome, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. I just, I'm curious, in the presentation, and thank you for, number one, the work, and number two, the presentation is certainly enlightening. I thought I saw a 70% white representation amongst the boards and commissions and a 46% population. Did I not see that right, or was I reading that wrong?
Probably did.
You probably did. But to be fair, I sent out 143, I believe, 143 representatives. I understand that some of them kind of overlap because some people serve on more than one board. But I only received, I believe, 59 responses. So, that's why I was saying it's a little skewed because not everybody responded. So, I had to, like, work with what I got at this point because I can't track you down and say, please, do my survey. So, we had to just work with what we had at the time. And I, I understand what you're saying, it's, it seemed a little off. But I, I honestly think if everybody did respond, because it would have been a little, you know, that number probably would have been less as far as like the white and Caucasian, to be fair.
Is it possible to continue gathering that data? I think it's important to know. So, is there a way that we can in our, you know, next set of board and committee meetings, have the president or the chair either gather the data for you? Or can we get that to you somehow and still have it compiled? Is it too late?
Absolutely. I could absolutely redo, like, just resend out the survey. And if you say, hey, you should definitely fill it out because it was more like a suggestion on my part, I can't, again, I couldn't force anybody to do anything. And if you want to do it that way, I will definitely compile that information again and bring it to you, just like I did, not a problem.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate it. And, you know, again, this is a bright shine star at West Orange, so kudos to you. And I'll do what I can to help make sure that we get a higher response rate. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
So, her semester is going to end soon. We don't know if we'll have the responses, but it certainly could, it would be worth the, the follow-up if we send.
I don't mind working on it over the summer, like I told you.
I know. Now that you're on the commission, now that you're on the commission, we have worked pretty good. Councilwoman Catalina?
I, thank you, Kimberly, so much for coming on. And I, I know it's hard to retrieve that information from all of us. So, why don't we make your life easier and send those surveys to the council? Because we're all liaisons to all these commissions. And then, and then we could send it out. So, we, we could help you, especially, I'm sure you have finals coming up and whatnot, being the end of the school year.
Bored to it.
Hate to remind, I hate to remind you, but yeah, we, we could send that out, that information.
Yeah, that would be great. I, you know. We probably should have done that in the first place, but I just thought it would have gotten a higher response, to be fair.
You always hope.
Gave them extra time. Yeah, we did give everyone extra time, an extra week, but.
I've been involved with a lot of surveys in the community, and it's, it's tough because we all send emails, and sometimes we don't see all our emails. If we get inundated on the same one day that you might have sent it, you know, people could have got 100 other emails. But, but thank you for all your time, and yeah, whatever we could do to help you.
I can leave my email in the chat, and then whoever's in charge of whatever committee, just send me your, send me an email, and I'll just send it to you guys. And then we could do it that way, like you said, and just.
You can send to the council, the township clerk, and she'll get it to us.
Okay, gotcha, which is Sherri, right? Oh, okay, gotcha.
Sherri was involved, yes.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Good luck.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions?
Get rid of my hands.
No, and thank you. We'll be in touch.
Alrighty, thank you, guys, have a wonderful night.
All right.
Take care.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have time for council liaison announcements?
You have two minutes.
Two minutes.
I'll let you go over.
All right. Councilwoman Catalina, we can do our announcements here, I feel like.
I'll go quickly. I want to start off, hope everybody had nice holidays. I just want to give kudos to our Recreation Department, Candy Myrick, and the Department, Bill Kea, they, they outdid themselves with their Easter spray, our spring fling with the bunny at Conforty Field. A beautiful, beautiful afternoon with, between the children and the parents, almost 1,000 people came out. And it was just a great, oh, we even have a slide. It was just a beautiful, beautiful day, and just so, it was just, I, I just get such joy from seeing all the families really enjoy, a lot of new residents, and just that they love our township, and they love when we have all these events. And just, you know, seeing people enjoy with what we all have to offer is, just gives you a great feeling. So, a lot of fun, beautiful, beautiful afternoon. And, and, and Reck really worked hard. They, they've done some great things. So, thank you to all of them for all their, for all their efforts. On this Saturday, April 30th, the Downtown Alliance, we're going to be out there supporting, one of our businesses, How Delish, they're celebrating their two-year anniversary, and we'll be celebrating them with the reopening of a ribbon cutting. As we all know, the pandemic hit our businesses so hard. And they've, you know, spent the past two years, you know, just trying to, just to survive. And so, we're going to celebrate their two-year anniversary and hope to see whoever can make it out there at 1:00 PM. Also, we have the junior ROTC cadets from West Orange High School. I'm not sure if we have a slide for that. Okay, great. So, you know, one of the great things that I had the privilege of doing in my time on the, on the school board was, was supporting this initiative that came to us years ago. It may be 10 years now, almost, that this has been, been in effect, this program. And just such a great, you know, great program, wonderful opportunities for our students. I believe now there's over 130 cadets up at West Orange High School, the program grows. And Major Joe Marquessini was there from the, from the implementation. He's still there now, and they just do it with Major Thurston, and they just do just an outstanding job with, with our students. But there's a camp that, there's a sponsorship opportunity. So, businesses or residents want to support one of our future cadets. The summer camp is a week-long professional training camp that they will sponsor for our students, and it's, I believe, it's a $300 sponsorship. So, there's an email there below if anybody's interested. But the cadets have been so great giving back to our community, helping our seniors. I know Ms. Brill and I, we just can't thank them enough on all our downtown events. They're always there, helping to set up, to work with the, the children in the community, and just great volunteers. And, and again, Memorial Day is coming up, you'll see them represent there. And it's just, they're just so impressive and just so proud. So, again, if anyone is in the position that they can sponsor a cadet, please try to do so. It's just such a wonderful, outstanding program. And we also have, our mobile app is actually been live to a select few because we're trying to work out the tweaks, but it's really cool. And I'm going to ask my colleagues if they want to go to, not to the public yet, or if you're in the public, it's, it's not really polished yet, we're tweaking it. But they could download it at their Android or Google or their iPhone app stores. And it's pretty cool, it's there, we're switching a few things around. And Ms. Brill's been busy working with them. Also, she's been busy working on a new website for the Downtown Alliance. And we're all getting ready for June 4th Street Fair from 11 to 5:00. So, we're excited about that. A lot of vendors this year, food trucks, just, it's going to be great. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate, and all will have a good time that day, too. The, our public libraries having their book sale. I went to a friends' meeting the other night, actually, I attended on Zoom, some folks were live in the audience. That was a great meeting, folks were so excited that the March Minion and Dave Cubey did outstanding job sharing the plans of the, or the revise, for the revisions, the renovations, rather, for Ten Rony Circle, and it's just, just exciting, it's going to be beautiful. The community is really, really going to have to, a lot to enjoy in that building. And I really thank the board, and especially March and Dave, they've been there every step of the way. I know we have a resolution tonight, and just so excited for that project to get started and look forward to the resolution later this evening. And that's it for now, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matute Brown, I know you have been very busy, but, right, okay. We'll catch up with you next time. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. The only update I want to give is from the joint meeting. As everyone here is aware, Hurricane Ida last year inundated us and caused severe damage via flooding to not just homes, but to organizations and institutions around Essex County. and caused severe damage, uh, via flooding to, uh, not just homes, but to, uh, organizations and institutions around Essex County. Um, we have a major, uh, upgrade plan for the joint, uh, meeting, which is our sewer commission, uh, to make sure that in the event we have, um, a storm surge or, uh, record rainfall like we did last year, especially in such a short period of time, uh, that our toilets continue to flush and that we're still able to, you know, pump water out of our houses. So, um, it is, it is a very proactive approach, uh, and I want to salute all the leadership there. Uh, the executive director and all of those, um, that had a hand in getting out in front of this. Um, we were spared, uh, one of the three facilities at the joint meeting, which is what allowed us to continue operating. Um, this upgrade will protect all of those facilities. And so God forbid we get another, um, storm like Ida, uh, we will be prepared, or at least we should be. Uh, so, uh, you know, that's the latest from the joint meeting, uh, and that's the only update I want to give tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. Um, bringing an update. The Municipal Alliance Committee, uh, will be hosting on Thursday, a workshop on cannabis use myths. Debunking the myths. That'll be a lunch and learn held via Zoom, uh, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. Registration is uh, HTTPS bitly, uh, slash whoa cannabis. Um, please register. That also is on our township website. If you were unable to, uh, capture that login information and register for that website. Uh, hosting for that event, uh, will be our own, uh, Chief Abbott, uh, William Nefsey, Steve Margot, Joel Torres, and Dr. Teresa Redling, uh, from Barnabas, from Cooperman Barnabas. Um, it is indeed going to be a lively discussion, um, giving us information on medical use, prevention, treatment, um, law and, and medicine. So we look forward to that, uh, on Thursday. Also, the M A L met earlier today. Um, their fiscal year ends on June 30th, and there are some additional funds, um, that they will be reallocating for some additional programs. Um, right now, what's in the works will be, um, considering doing a health, uh, mental wellness workshop or day mindfulness day with our high school students. Um, and then there's also a youth grant, um, that will be available July through March. Um, that will be applying for, for a youth leadership program and will be partnering, um, with the Epic Program and that's going to be participating with the high school as well. The E D C is asking, the Economic Development Commission meeting is asking to save the date of May 23rd. Um, we would like to host a Realtor Open House. Um, that's been something that's done in the past with the Downtown West Alliance, West Orange Alliance, the, um, Downtown West Orange Alliance, the schools, the Board of Ed. Um, so we're going to make sure that date is available for all those entities to come in and look to host something for the Realtor community, uh, so they can understand and be enlightened about all the exciting, um, changes that are happening right here in West Orange. Also, just wanted to acknowledge and, and get an update. We had a fire, um, on Sunday that impacted, um, for to my understanding, sixteen of our residents. Um, four of those homes have been destroyed and are, uh, in- inhabitable, uninhabitable. Um, there is a GoFundMe set up for, uh, one of the residents in particular. Um, but if there is any, uh, donations, we want to arrange, uh, and do whatever we can for those in need, uh, during this difficult time. So we'll look to, um, donations are always accepted through the Mayor's Sunshine Fund. So if anyone would like to donate specifically to the heart drive residents, certainly you can do that and, um, make donations to the sunshine fund, the mayor sunshine fund. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
You very much. And it was nice to see Steve Margiotis's name. Again, we recognized him earlier in the year when, uh, we were doing mental health and he was on the panel there for the municipal alliance, uh, cannabis, uh, webinar. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I was, uh, just piggybacking off of what, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Williams was just discussing, um, the tragedy at Heart Drive. I was contacted by one of the residents there and able to help her get some assistance from an organization called Family Assistance Resource Center. Uh, so wanted to let folks to know that they can visit the website at F A R C N J dot org. Um, for assistance with, uh, a, a whole host of things, including navigating some of the bureaucracy around getting some of the benefits you need from either Red Cross or other sources. Um, and they can also reach out to me as well. We have some resources at the church that we provide for folks in crisis too. Uh, so these are our neighbors and, uh, we certainly don't want to, um, you know, forget them in their time of need. Uh, so if they're watching now or if they, if you know of, uh, any of those families, please feel free to share that information with them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing those resources. Councilwoman Matupra.
I'm sorry, I just.
Do the best you can, yes.
When you, when you called on me, I was having a little bit of difficulty. But I just thought it, um, it's not enough for me to just nod my head to the public and say that I. So you'll allow me a moment of personal privilege to explain to the, um, public that I am quarantined out of the country. Uh, we traveled to celebrate our oldest daughter's wedding. And I had tested positive. Thankfully, everyone else has not, and they have been able to travel home. I am here for 10 days. I am having, um, some difficulty breathing. Thankfully, I am vaccinated. I am boosted, which is helping, um, you know, fend off some of this. So I am going to, uh, unlike most meetings and those of you who have joined us in the past, um, I am going to be a little less talkative. Um, and I will be asking, um, support from my council, um, as we move into our agenda, our public agenda, that we move some items up, um, as, as a priority out of order so that I can speak on them, um, before I am able to, I'm no longer able to. So, um, please accept my apologies for my demeanor this evening, but I am with COVID, but plugging through it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you for the announcement. I, personal announcement. Thank you. Let's see, where I can begin with, um, this Saturday, April 30th, the Youth Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, uh, along with the Badlaniet, uh, Foundation. They are, uh, doing street art at Hazel Avenue School. Uh, thank you, Meg, for this. So we have Elijah Minton and the Urban Art Class at West Orange High School have created a design. Uh, a lot, Elijah will sketch it out on the street and, uh, students, volunteers will be painting the street, uh, at, at Mitchell Street and Glen Road. There will be plenty of music and games, face painting, food trucks, um, and Easy Ride. If you recall last May, Easy Ride did a bike safety skills course and a pop-up bike lane at, um, Redwood School and Woodland Avenue. And they will be doing a bike safety skills course as well at Hazel Avenue School. Please visit the website to learn more. We had a Rena House, uh, board meeting on Tuesday and I was really pleased that the board, there were, um, concerns that were raised from some of the residents and quotes have been requested, uh, to make improvements to the outdoor patio. So I was very pleased that, uh, the board approved those recommendations to move forward with upgrading the, uh, furniture and equipment on the patio at the Rena House. The West Orange Environmental Commission, we did just receive a letter in the beginning of the week that we were awarded a New Jersey American Water Grant, uh, to continue the work that's being done on the west branch of the Railway River. So this will be phase two of that project, working with the DPW Engineering Department, and it will be a community event, uh, either late spring or, uh, early fall. We'll keep you posted on that. And the Environmental Commission is also working with the Health Department and New Jersey Clean Communities with the single plastic bag ban that is coming up on May, May 4th statewide, that, uh, we will, yep, the Health Department, Health Director has ordered these bags. We have personalized them. They come from, uh, New Jersey Clean Communities and we personalize the bags with the, um, West Orange logo on that and they will be available for distribution. And as events come back, uh, we will be able to distribute them throughout the community. And West Orange Arts Council this Saturday has a collage workshop. There's an actual World Collage Day. This would be, uh, uh, the third, uh, third workshop, uh, in a series. If we have that, this is for Earth Day. And also coming up, Music for Mom. This would be Mother's Day event on Saturday, May 7th. So please visit W O arts dot org to get information on a lot of things that are going on at the West Orange Arts Gallery and a gift shop right there, 551 Valley Road. Thank you. And what else do we have? We have the Friends of Thomas Edison National Stork Park. Uh, a reception coming up on March, on May 15th. This would be a fund and friend raiser. Uh, as you know, this is our first, um, motion picture production studio invented right here on our main street at the Thomas Edison National Stork Park. Uh, the Black Mariah and, um, it could use some repair. Uh, so that's what this fundraiser will be for. All the proceeds will be donated to, uh, so as you can see this in this invention, uh, the roof raises that rolls up, but it is manually, the building is manually pushed on those wooden, um, beams, uh, to capture the sun as the, uh, as it rotates around. Uh, and there are films that were made there for Thomas Edison. Like I said, the first, uh, motion picture production studio. Uh, the wooden beams on the ground have to be repaired and some work inside to make it, uh, so that people can enjoy the legacy of that and be able to go inside and see. So everyone is invited, May 15th. Please visit Friends of Thomas Edison National Stork Park for more information on that. Luna Stage after COVID two, after two years of COVID, they will have their first, uh, performance starting on 28th, I go through May, uh, May 22nd, I believe. Maybe we have a slide on that too, that was avoiding my soul. I, if we don't have a slide, then please visit lunastage.org for more information, uh, on that. Seeking the Meaning of Life. And I believe that's it. Did I miss anything? Quite a bit going on. All right. So this was a cleanup that happened, um, with Laura Van Dyke and Noelley. You could see there are ROTC cadets there. We had a lot of volunteers come out and, um, what Laura Van Dyke, Senior Coordinator and Noelley have coordinated, they reached out to senior citizens townwide if they needed yard work done. And volunteers came out. This was on April 9th. Uh, about 29 homes signed up, residents signed up and people were dispatched to three or four homes to, uh, to clean people's yards. So it was, um, very reward, rewarding and residents were very grateful. Think that is going to, any of the homes that, uh, that were not, um, attended to, they're still on the list and we will set up another date to come out, uh, to clean up. Thank you. I didn't know that was in there. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in Township Clerk's Office on November 24th, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman Castelino.
Sorry, President.
Councilwoman Matupra.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President McCartney.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you. We'll open for public comment, Madam Moderator.
Yes, we have a few handfuls. Joe Fagan.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and a good evening to you, Madam President, Council colleagues, members of the administration, and all those on the call tonight. I'm Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to address the West Orange public this evening. Tonight, I would like to announce an historical print matted and framed was gifted to the Township of West Orange at the annual business meeting of the 102nd Calvary of the Essex Troop this past Saturday. The ceremony took place at the West Orange Armory on Pleasant Valley Way, which has been home to the Essex Troop in West Orange since 1937. The historic print shows the Essex Troop providing a mounted cavalry escort for President Woodrow Wilson's inauguration in Washington DC on March 4th, 1913. I accepted the gift on behalf of the township and the print, uh, actually is hung now inside council chambers. On May 5th at 5 o'clock PM, an Israeli flag raising will take place on the front steps of West Orange Tower Hall. It will coincide with Israeli Independence Day, which will be celebrating its 74th anniversary. Or invited to attend this important event in support of the West Orange Jewish community. Several months ago, the West Orange Township Council approved the naming of two municipal lots in town. The Goldman Lot in Pleasantale and the Gordon Hansen Lot in the St. Mark's section downtown off Lindsay Avenue. I am pleased to report this evening that two, and two, two new attractive signs depicting both those names have now been installed in both parking lots. The Goldman name, uh, family name is synonymous or should be synonymous with Pleasantale. In 1930, there was no organized Jewish community in West Orange. The small number of Jewish residents living here at that time met in the Goldman Hotel for weekly worship services. The Goldmans formed the nucleus of a group that had a heartfelt desire to give their children a religious and social Jewish atmosphere. They were successful in that endeavor and today the Pleasantale section of West Orange owes them a debt of gratitude, which is now fondly remembered by the naming of the Goldman Parking Lot. The other parking lot namesake Gordon Hanson graduated West Orange High School in 1942 and served in the US Army during World War II. During the Battle of Balls in 1944, Hanson was awarded the Bronze Star for heroically re-establishing communications with rear artillery units, providing support of their forward positions. In doing so, he ran the perilous gauntlet of direct enemy gunfire along the only road to the rear. Lines of communication were established, thank the, thanks to Hanson's efforts, saving the trapped men of his unit until US Army reinforcements could arrive. And in doing so, delayed the action of two German Panzer tank divisions. Hanson was sadly killed in action six weeks before the end of the war. The signage at the parking lot will now honor his memory and sacrifice. I will have more information and a very special announcement about Hanson at the next town council meeting regarding this year's Memorial Day ceremony. Before I conclude my report this evening, Madam President, I would like to invite the public to see Hanson's war medals, the historic Essex Troop print, and dozens of other historical West Orange artifacts on display at the Town Hall Walking Tour this Saturday, April 30th at 11:00 AM. The tour will last a little over an hour and be inside Town Hall and will take place, rain or shine. The tour is sponsored by the Downtown West Orange Alliance and is free and open to the public. But I prefer you register for the tour by emailing me at jfagan@westorange.org. If you can't join us this Saturday, there will be other similar tours showcasing the town's history and their dates will be announced. Thank you, Madam President. That is all I have this evening and have a good meeting.
Uh, thank you, Joe. I'm sure you're in your glory with all of that historic memorabilia at your disposal.
Next up, we have Gary Van Wick. Please state your name and address for the record.
Gary Van Wick, Bennett Terrace.
Madam Moderator, can you set the timer, please?
Yes. Thank you.
Good evening to everybody and Councilwoman Matute Brown, I wish you a speedy recovery. You're a real trooper for, for being here. I just wanted to comment briefly on item number 11622, which concerns road improvements in the Lenox Terrace area. I see there a budget including the removal of 16 trees. For $9,500. These, these improvements to sidewalks should not be the occasion for the destruction of town-owned trees. This is something that we've discussed many times in the Environmental Commission. Where it has been urged that public works should take every effort to preserve trees, especially large ones. We've gone over the fact that these trees are actually owned by the town. So when the Department of Public Works or contractors hired by the town destroy trees. They're actually destroying town property. And many, many town residents are adamantly against this, as the town council well knows. I mean, there have been times when it has been claimed that the trees had to be removed because they were unwell or they were. It was difficult to do the work without saving them. But we have the evidence in hand of the willful destruction of perfectly healthy trees. And that's also been discussed many times. I saw it happen myself on the corner of Burnett Terrace and Sylvan. Where the forester, at that time, John Linson. Agreed that the destruction of two oak trees that were more than 100 years old. Was not because the trees were in any way unhealthy. It's just they were removed because it was more convenient and easier for the contractors. To essentially do their job of laying sidewalks and really, you know, making money in, in the process of doing that. This particular contractor has earned many millions of dollars doing roadworks and improvements for the town. And I strongly believe that they should be taking, you know, every opportunity to save trees. And the town council and the Department of Public Works should be ensuring that trees like these are saved in the public interest. We have a climate crisis upon us and we should not be destroying carbon soaks, which are what trees are. Trees also improve the value of nearby homes. They create cooling, so reduce cooling costs and they have many other environmental benefits. So I would like that this particular budget not be approved tonight. Unless and until the $9,500 for the destruction of trees is reallocated. To the task of actually saving those trees and building the sidewalks, drains, or whatever are required around the trees. This is done in many other communities around us and it's by no means difficult or impossible. If there are situations where trees are removed. We need to have a zero net loss policy in place for trees in town. So that if, you know, a 20-year-old tree is removed, a similar tree needs to be planted. Maybe not a 20-year-old one, but a viable, healthy, large tree to make up for the tree that's removed. So I do hope that town council will take this matter seriously and start to take action on this long overdue matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wick.
Next, we have DT. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. My name is Darren Tobia. I live at 24 Colonial Street. I appreciate Kimberly Hill's effort to take the lead on this diversity survey on the issue of diversity. I was really looking forward to this presentation, but one statistic in that presentation mattered and that's that only 59 people responded. That's less than half of the people who were sent that survey. We can't as a town preach the importance of diversity and inclusion when we can't be bothered to participate in a five-minute survey about this issue. I would like to thank the council, however, for stepping up and offering help in getting accurate results. My second issue, I would like to comment on the proposed sale of the library at Mount, on 45 Mount Pleasant. The reason I oppose this resolution is because the current library alternative at Rooney Circle is in its current state, a very dangerous proposal. It's been a year since the mayor gave us his presentation about the library. And we still haven't seen any plans or even discussion about the pedestrian infrastructure that will allow people to access this library. Library patients shouldn't be required to traverse busy driveways or grass-covered landscaping areas to access their public library. Without seeing this infrastructure, the public cannot weigh in on whether we even want this resolution on the agenda tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have MK. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is MK Adams. I live in Park Drive South. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. In the nine years since I bought my house on the Park Drive Loop, parking has gone from challenging but manageable to extremely difficult and upsetting. I was interested to read a recent comment by Mayor Parisi that parking has been the dominant complaint during his time in office. And that the relaxed enforcement of parking ordinances during the dark days of COVID has resulted in worsened parking problems. I wrote a letter to the mayor and the Traffic Bureau in March of 2019, expressing some of my concerns and received no reply. Many houses on the Park Drive Loop, including mine, and a few small apartment buildings do not have driveways. All these residents depend on street parking. Houses that were vacant when I moved to the neighborhood have been bought and many of the apartment buildings have no vacancy. That's a great thing. In West Orange, everyone reasonably expects to be able to park near their homes. Access to street parking has been abused by nearby businesses and non-residents even before COVID. Recently, the body shops on Main Street across and adjacent from the Loop have parked their customers' vehicles on Ashwood Terrace, Park Drives North and South, and Park Terrace. Many of these vehicles don't move for weeks. Some are not functional. Some are commercial vehicles from other towns. To their credit, whenever I've called the WO parking department to report a vehicle that hasn't moved in a week or two, or in one case, 30 weeks. Officers follow up pretty quickly. But the squatter gets a reprieve after their vehicle has been identified. The 48-hour ordinance is clocked from when the tires are marked. That means residents go a few more days unable to park in that spot. For the past several years, I have bought a permit for parking lot number 12, thinking that at least I would have a guaranteed parking spot. Not so. Numerous times, I've come home from work late at night to find no available spaces in the lot. That means someone is parking illegally. This was especially worse during COVID. I have no recourse when that happens. I call the main desk of the W O P D and they usually send someone out to investigate. But no tow truck arrives at that time, no space is cleared. So I'm left circling the area trying to find a place to park my car and hope I don't have to walk too far at night to get home. It's time for the council and the township to consider real solutions to a worsening problem. These streets are public, yet there are plenty of urban planners and municipalities that have addressed and resolved similar frustrating parking problems. Here are just a few options. A resident permit strategy. Homeowners and apartment residents without off-street parking could be prioritized. Residents with driveways could be provided permits after residents who don't have that luxury are afforded a fair place to park. Just because my house and neighborhood was built 100-plus years ago doesn't mean I should stress about parking. Resident street permits are common practice in many, many New Jersey towns. Marked parking stalls, defined parking spaces would help avoid the frequent misuse of space by people who park with an excessive cushion around their vehicle. This habit is like man spreading on a subway. It's inconsiderate. It's very, very frustrating. Marked diagonal stalls. Marking diagonal parking spaces allows more cars to park in a limited area. An example of this strategy can be found near Colgate Park on Cherry Street. Clear communication with businesses about violations of permissible street parking. Last year, I appreciated my conversation with Councilwoman Castelino about the Bethany Church Parking Lot Initiative that never came to fruition. That plan didn't come close to solving the parking problem in this area. It was like putting a small Band-Aid on a gushing wound. Street parking in this area is usually full by 4:00 or 5:00 PM. Parking stress quickly becomes more than just an annoyance. It's absolutely a quality of life issue and an economic issue. When I bought my house nine years ago, I thought I would be a permanent resident of West Orange. But if I can't be sure if I'll find parking, regardless whether I pay for it. I'm less inclined to go out to dinner, to participate in town events, to have friends over, to run out on an errand, et cetera. Parking stress has lessened my enjoyment of my home, my neighbors, and my town. I ask you to please figure out a solution. Thank you very much. Get well, Councilwoman Matute Brown.
Thank you very much, Ms. Adams.
Next up, we have Joe Krikovia. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joe Krikovia, Grandview Avenue. Good evening. I'm sorry to hear that Councilwoman Matute Brown is suffering from the virus and wishes her speedy recovery. I'd like, I'd ask about two recent apparent violations of the State Open Public Meetings Act. As applied to the township of West Orange under a legal settlement from several years ago, the American Civil Liberties Union. The statute is designed to maximize transparency for the benefit of the public in the conduct of its business. The law does this in part by prohibiting the majority of governing body members from discussing public business among themselves outside of required public notice and access. The law also requires a process providing transparency and accountability when a municipal entity goes into executive session, secret from the public. Law provides fines for violations. I understand that the most recent meeting of the Economic Development Commission featured three sitting council members, all attending, bearing discussion of downtown redevelopment. Since this appears to be about to violate the Act and legal settlement, I ask that these three council members identify themselves on this call. And explain in more detail what happened, including Councilwoman Williams, who I believe is the council liaison to the group. I'd like to know how long the three council members were together at the meeting, whether the meeting was recorded and minutes taken, and what specifically was discussed. Also like to hear from each whether they believe they violated the statute and why or why not. Also, at the April 6th Planning Board meeting, my understanding is that board members went into an executive session without following the provisions of the Act. It requires members to publicly review and vote on a resolution to go into executive session. This resolution requires the citation of the specific exception to the state's prohibition against secrecy. And the description of the actual subject of the executive session. My understanding is that was not done with, which the meeting again confirms. So I asked Council President McCartney, council's representative on the planning board for many years. Who I would hope be familiar enough with the Open Public Meetings Act procedures to follow them after going through its scores of times on the council. To confirm these facts and explain the decision not to comply with the Act. I asked who gave the planning board legal advice on this issue. I asked the council to investigate these two incidents to confirm the relevant facts, including whether these apparent violations of the Open Public Meetings Act have occurred elsewhere in town. And report back to residents, hopefully by the next council meeting. I also asked council members to reiterate their support for the Open Public Meetings Act of government transparency and of their commitment to follow the law going forward. Regarding the proposed sale of the library, has there been any public bidding for this property? How is the price of this property determined? This is a major public asset. That is essentially owned by the residents. Competition for this public asset and public bidding would help determine its market value. Who knows what the market value is otherwise? Who knows? It might be worth millions of dollars more, which would probably finance a lot more affordable housing than this transaction. Or provide resources for whatever else we think is important. Regarding Mr. Gross's executive employment contract. The council gave him a 25% raise last year, or nearly $46,000, to a total base salary of 220, more than $225,000. Hard to tell just how much more he gets this year. It's even harder when the contract wasn't included on the website until I asked the municipal clerk to post it yesterday. It should have been up several days ago. His base would rise to more than $230,000. He's given longevity, which is given to those with long employment tenure, tenure but stopped years ago, the new employees. Without specifying except that it's a 10% bump, that looks like nearly $23,000 more compensation to at least more than $253,000. Provides deferred compensation, but doesn't specify the dollar amount. I'd like to know the dollar amount of that. It provides free vacation, I'm sorry, free healthcare benefits for life. And why was there no mention of his position as business administrator? What is the status of employees put on leave without pay months ago because of the mayor's COVID vaccination policy? How many people are still impacted? I continue to ask that you not approve the area need of rehabilitation ordinance until you can show residents a likely financial impact of the five-year tax exemption. And that increase revenue to the town by 50%, especially for large commercial structures. And the town should continue to make every effort to protect our trees, even if they're inconvenient. Thank you, Mr. Van Wick. Thanks tonight. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Ron Charles. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ron Charles, 25 Colonial Woods Drive, West Orange. Thank you, Madam Moderator. My first question is regarding Resolution 114-22. Tonight, the town has a resolution of purchasing. $44,952 worth of flashing LED pedestrian crossing signs. So I wanted to know how many are we purchasing for that amount? Number one. Part two of that is, have the locations been picked for that already? And if so, how were they selected? And the second question I have regarding Resolution 119-22. It's for the resolution authorizing rejection of all the bids for IT services. So I was just wondering, was there one specific reason that all the bids were rejected? Were they overpriced, not qualified vendors? Did it not meet the pay-to-play rules? So I was wondering if you guys can shed some light on why they were rejected. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Next, we have, it's a telephone number ending in 8294. Please state your name and address for the record. It's 201407824.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is Michaela Bennett, Old Indian Road. Council President and council members, thank you and good evening. It's been a long time. Since I've attended a meeting and the last time I did, it was apparent to me. That you as elected officials stopped caring about the concerns of your constituents. I stopped attending because it was a colossal waste of my time. I didn't stop watching the videos. I just stopped attending, hoping that you would take concern seriously. But I'm back and mostly because of all the unconscionable things that you've been asked to consider. There is a resolution on the agenda tonight that if for no other reason, I'm here to create a record about. I hope you'll consider my concerns, but if not, they'll be here on Zoom to reference in perpetuity. You, well, at least three of you, maybe four, are in a unique place. You're auditioning for mayor, as you sit here tonight, considering the resolutions that are before you. And I choose to remind you of that because each of you, as a mayoral candidate, will individually. will individually, if your campaigns are successful, break a barrier for this beautiful and diverse town that has never had the opportunity to be led by anyone but a white man. So as I remain hopeful about the future of West Orange, I remind you that your actions, comments, positions, and votes are your audition for how you'll lead as mayor. I'll get right to the point. Tonight, there's a resolution before you asking for your approval for John Gross to hold two full-time roles for West Orange while he is the part-time CFO for Dover. When do we, as a community, prioritize attracting and retaining people of color and women to roles in our township's highest offices? Why do we persist in padding the pockets of a few white men who don't even respect our town enough to live here? No, rather, Mr. Gross lives elsewhere, in an apartment owned by B and E, the developer du jour of this township. Leaving aside the complicity that some of you have as candidates who take money from B and E straw donors, the fact that our CFO lives in an apartment owned by B and E and that was not disclosed to all of you when you were asked to approve his lucrative CFO contract is dubious in my mind. But to now be asked to approve an even larger salary, lifetime benefits and raises associated with the BA role is completely unacceptable. Why do we do this? Chief Abbott has an inflated salary justified in a similar structuring, and now John Gross should enjoy the same? Why? Why not hire a woman or a person of color and start reflecting our diverse community in roles that were traditionally preserved for cronies who perpetuate age-old inequities? Will your administrations operate that way also? Why would you endorse such a practice now? All it does is inflate Mr. Gross's already obscene pension and deny access to a qualified and maybe more independent and less beholden candidate. Why wasn't this role posted? And why don't you insist on that? Before you approve a resolution for an employment candidate that a fair and open process is followed and that women and people of color should be strongly encouraged to apply. Mr. Gross arrived to West Orange from South Orange and Maplewood in two thousand and eleven. He was only permitted then to work ten hours for South Orange and Maplewood while he worked forty hours for us. How can you approve another eighty-hour double role position when all it does is increase the taxpayers' perpetual burden? Please take this opportunity to show us how you'll all lead and do not approve this contract. Insist on equity, integrity, and a fair and open process. We can do much better if you insist on it. Uh, Councilwoman Matute Brown, I hope that you feel better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Malanga. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Malanga, fifty-seven Ridge Road. Council President, members of the council, good evening. Councilwoman Matute Brown, congratulations to you and Steve on the marriage of your daughter, and I wish you a rapid recovery. Couple of months ago, a resident who lives near the Colonial Woods Drive Housing Construction Project contacted our Green West Orange and informed us that she is experiencing flooding on her property, as are other neighbors. I took a ride to Colonial Woods Drive and I saw that, to my dismay, every mature tree on that site, excuse me, was cut down for the project. And I also found that there were no street trees that were replanted. I submitted an Oprah request for the performance bond for the project and for the tree cutting and tree restoration plan. And also for the correspondence pertaining to the performance bond. After a couple of extensions of time, I was informed by Ms. Carnaval that the only document that was available was the tree restoration plan. And there was no documentation pertaining to the performance bond, which I found rather strange, considering that there was an amendment to the development agreement between the township and the developer that specifically addresses the performance bond. Ms. Carnaval also suggested that I contact Mr. Lepore and Mr. Gross for further information. So I'm asking Mr. Gross, Mr. Lepore, and the council to please explain the status of the performance bond. Please explain why every single tree on the site was cut down. And please explain why no trees have been planted as street trees as part of this project and as is required by the tree replanting plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that we have Anthony Puglisi still. Anthony, are you there?
Good evening. This is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiPincenzo. I just want to keep you up to date on a few upcoming county events. And they either have to do with collections in the environment or vaccinations, two of our favorite topics. So on April thirtieth is Drug Takeback Day. This is a partnership between the county, each of our municipalities, including West Orange. And that's where residents can bring their old or unwanted prescription drugs and drop them off in the police department. You have that drop box in the lobby there. The box in West Orange is available year-round. But we'd like to highlight Drug Takeback Day. That's a DEA-sponsored event that we like to participate in. And we are partners, in addition to the police department, we're partners with Adapt. And we've been doing this, excuse me, we've been doing this for about ten years. On May seventh is our Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day from eight-thirty to four P M. That's at our Public Works Yard in Cedar Grove. May twenty-first is our Computer Electronics Collection Day, also in Cedar Grove. And then June fourth, from nine A M. to one P M., we have a Paper Shredding and Used Tire Collection Day, also in Cedar Grove. Finally, we do continue to offer vaccines at the West Orange Kmart. Our current schedule for this week is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thursdays and Fridays are from two to seven. Saturdays are eight A M. to two P M. Beginning in May, we are going to reduce that by one day and will only be open on Friday and Saturday. Friday from two to seven and Saturday from eight to two. We will be doing more mobile outreach come May. We will be set up in front of Newark City Hall, Orange City Hall, East Orange City Hall, and Irvington City Hall on specific days, Tuesday to Friday, in addition to the Kmart hours. All this can be found on our website, which is S S County N J dot org. And if you have any questions, I'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you.
Council President, we have one more hand raised. Mel Valdez. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mel Julie Valdez, and I live on Elm Street. Good evening to everybody, council president, council members, administrators, and residents of West Orange that are attending this meeting. Thank you so much for taking your time to be here tonight. So I have a few remarks that I would like to make regarding. First, I will start with ordinance that is on second reading, which is item twenty-six eighty-one dash twenty-two, which is an ordinance that is amending chapter seven dash twelve of the current ordinance. Let me just pull up my questions that I had sent previously to all council members. So this ordinance was introduced, and I feel that the ordinance is very vague. Why is this ordinance being amended as such? Who in the administration specifically asked for this ordinance to be amended as such, since it only targets very specific streets? I believe that there are other ways to go about this issue to prevent blight, as is the legislative intent of this of this specific ordinance. The ordinance reads that the portion entitled Hours and Days, which specifies specific days and hours, shall be repealed and replaced by the following language. Hours and days shall be fixed from time to time by resolution duly adopted by the Township Council. To me, that makes no sense. The reason that that doesn't make any sense is because I myself and many residents worked very hard to have certain streets in the downtown area that the ordinance amended. So Elm Street, Franklin Avenue, and Maple Cherry, the ordinance was amended to allow parking. On Mondays, parking is not allowed from nine A M. to one P M. to allow for the street cleaner. And then on Fridays, the other side from nine A M. to one P M. to allow for the street cleaner. So now, all of a sudden, we are asking for a new chapter to be added, or excuse me, another section to be added to this chapter seven dash twelve. And the new chapter shall be added. Besides existing fines and sanctions, any violation of the sanction section shall be subject to an additional fifty-dollar Clean West Orange Assessment, which money shall be used to ensure the cleanliness of the township, including maintaining the township's quality, quality, quality of life, excuse me. So I asked, when a fine is levied, how is said fine paid? Does the fine go to a special fund or a bank account? These questions went unanswered. Also, I felt that Mr. Gross did not really provide a clear answer as to where the monies for these fines would go when the fifty-dollar fine is assessed. Why would Public Works, he mentioned Public Works needing to work overtime. But what I would like to know is, why is public work needing to work overtime when they are already tasked with cleaning debris as part of their job? If they are working overtime, is there any type of way to do an analysis? And has the township done an analysis to see what is going on to necessitate the overtime? You know, I just feel that there is already an ordinance and a law on the books that allows for fines. And perhaps it's just working more with the West Orange Police Department, so the ordinance on the books is actually followed. Parking has been a big issue in this area. And it's something that, you know, I liked what Ms. Adams said. All the suggestions that she had are suggestions that I have posed and other residents have posed. We have met with Mr. Parisi, Mr. Lepore, Mr. Abbott, year after year, at Liberty Middle School, and nothing has really changed. So, you know, there are many of us that do not have driveways. I myself, my, my house does not have a driveway, and this has been an ongoing issue. Also, I would like to point out, Mr. Gross, this position, I just would like to understand, how are you able to work forty hours for West Orange and also work part-time for Dover? It just seems that we can actually perhaps hire someone else, an additional person, and actually add diversity to West Orange, so, so the work is spread to multiple people. And, um, there was something else I wanted to say. Concerning the sale of the library, the Alpert Group is the, the person that, that the property is going to be sold to. I would like to know, were other developers considered, given that the Alpert Group does not have the best reviews? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez. I did not want to interrupt your comments, but the discussion on the ordinance will come up at that time when we discuss the ordinance. So thank you for your remarks.
We do have a few other members of the public. Yeah, Melinda Harada, please state your name and address for the record. She might run away.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Melinda Werka, Park Seventeen Park Drive South. I just wanted to first and foremost send my prayers and hope for a speedy recovery to Councilwoman sending Matute Brown. And congratulations on the marriage of your daughter. May her marriage be full and, and of lasting love. And I do appreciate her mentioning the accuracy of the census. That is a, a big concern within the Latino undocumented Latino community, undocumented immigrant community, and non-English speaking community. There's always been a, a need to get, really get the members on, on those communities. The hesitancy, the fear behind filling out a census is something that is personal to, to myself and my family. The next thing I wanted to say was thank you to Kimberly Hill. I am glad to fill out that survey, if you will still accept it. I did overlook the email, and thank you for the work. It is important, and it does not go unnoticed. I just also wanted to make a mention as a board member to please follow, school of it, school, I'm sorry, as a school board member, to please follow the official West Orange Public Schools Facebook page and website for the most accurate information about what's going on in our schools, our Board of Ed meetings, and as well as our highlights of our alumni throughout our K to twelve district. I also wanted to thank some of my neighbors for calling in, Mel Valdez and M K Adams. We, this is a topic of discussion about the parking. Fines and violations are not the solutions. I actually have several parking tickets. It's very difficult finding parking close to the house. My, my own property does have a driveway, but I am a renter, and we are not allowed to park in our driveway. And so there are many residents here that find it very difficult with or without a driveway to park. There are many houses here that have multiple vehicles. And so it makes it very stressful. The Bethany Church parking space, I think part of the reason why it hasn't been utilized in the way that it could be is because of the limited times that we are allowed to use it. It has to be vacant early in the morning so that the Edison Middle School can use the, the parking area as a drop-off lane. And so I think that that adds to the, the hesitancy to get the permit to park there. It's the same cost as the other lodges, parking lodges that are not as close. And then as well, the other concern that M K Adams mentioned is that even with those permit parking spaces, you may or may not still find parking. I do want to take a quick moment to acknowledge one of these resolutions. Let me see, I don't know the actual number, but it is about flashing beacons along the main street by the community house. I believe there is also one going to be installed by the Dunkin' Donuts and Bethany Church Corner. Just thank you very much. That has been a huge concern. I think it's very needed. Our, our, our kids walk around and they have nowhere to cross. They are not going to walk all the way to Eagle Rock or all the way down to Washington Street to cross. Those are the closest to crosswalks. And so those flashing beacons are going to be very helpful in, in preventing any accidents. And thank God, nothing has happened to any of our pedestrians thus far, but I'm very glad that, that it will be installed. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Melinda.
Next, we have Pamela Beardsley.
Welcome, Pamela.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not mean to raise my hands.
Oh, well, welcome and good luck to you on your new venture.
There's something, let's see, Pamela Beardsley for Edisonia. There's something, um, let's see, Pamela Beardsley for Edisonia Terrace. Hi, everyone. Uh, I just, I guess, wanted to briefly, uh, mention some issues that, um. I guess my neighbors and myself have been having on Valley Road, five 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 Valley Road. We are new tenants to the area and, um, like others have mentioned, the parking situation in the area is pretty bad. I actually had to call in a couple of times regarding, um, some cargo bins being parked, um, for days, if not weeks at a time. So that's my, that's my, um, concern for the moment and hopefully some things can be, uh, fixed over there. Or I'm not sure what needs to be done, but. That's all, thank you.
Thank you Pamela.
Next we have Sally Malanga. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sally Malanga, fifty-seven Ridge Road. Councilman Rutherford began the evening with a description of the flooding and consequences of heavy rain in West Orange that we have experienced. Uh, that has caused landslides and terrible destruction of property. Uh, and misery. This is in part due to the continuous tree cutting by the Department of Public Works for sidewalk repair. Yet not one of you has demanded changes to this destructive policy. Nor have we heard of a tree planting program for the spring. You, I must say, you really come across as not caring. Regarding the public library, this evening you are selling it. Was the sale of this building bid out? What was the amount of the competing bids? Also, I have an objection to the renewal of our CFO, Mr. John Gross's contract for three years. An outgoing administration should not be allowed to renew a major employee's contract for this length of time. I urge you to reject the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Todd Dubovy. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Todd Dubovy, Ten Burnett Terrace. Um, I wanted to speak to, uh, also the extension of, uh, Mr. Gross's contract. Um, but first I want to make a few observations that I think are relevant to the decision whether to extend it or not. Um. The new, the new contract amount is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, base salary. Um, he came in in two thousand and eleven at a hundred and thirty thousand. Um, so if, uh, if you calculate what the average annual increase has been each year. Uh, over those ten years, basically, it amounts to seven point seven percent increase every year. Um, each and every, that's, that's a lot. Uh, I'm not sure there's many, uh, companies that give out those kinds of raises over that, you know, over such an extended period of time. Um. My other point is, is that, so, um. Mr. Gross is our CFO for our full-time CFO. Um, he's also our business administrator. Uh, I looked at our budget and I could not necessarily tell what his income or salary is for that position. Um, but based on the budget for the group. Uh, I'm guestimating a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the business administrator position. Um, and yet another full-time job. Uh, in addition, the town has allowed him to continue to work as a part-time CFO for Dover. So in essence, Ju- uh, Mr. Gross is working two and a half jobs. Um. You know, in the corporate world, uh, companies actually put in their agreements that, uh, you can't work for somebody else. Uh, but but this is, this is two and a half jobs that. I don't know too many people that can actually do that. Um. And, um, in addition, there's a clause in the contract that says that his salary should be, shall always be six percent higher than the second. Highest salary in the town. I think that's the the right, the language or the intent of it. I'm not quite sure what, why that is even in the contract or why he deserves such a clause. You know, all of those things and issues taken into account. Um, in addition to those that were mentioned by Sally Malanga in terms of saddling a new administration with somebody else. Um. You know, uh, my, my, uh, my request would be that you reject this particular proposal. I'm not objecting to Mr. Gross being CFO, but I don't believe that the business terms of the agreement. Make a whole lot of fiscal sense or frankly, reality in terms of how many jobs this person is expected to perform. Um, it's just, it doesn't make any sense. So, uh, I thank you for hearing me. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other members of the public wish to speak? I'm not seeing any hands. It's last call. Okay, no other members of the public.
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator. Well, I do see that, um, you know, first up was about trees and other comments were made about the trees on Lenox and Mason and Crestmont. I do know our town engineer and assistant municipal engineer are both on the line, uh, and they know that this has been an issue. So, um. I'm going to ask Mr. Lapore. To comment on, you know, what happens when we do have to replace sidewalks and aprons? And is there in fact a replace, a replacement plan in place?
Um, good evening, Council President. Uh, first of all, anybody, uh, associated with our Green West Orange who wants to walk, uh, any of the three streets that are. A part of that project, uh, that is listed on the resolution tonight. That's Lenox Terrace mass in place and a good portion of Crestmont Road. Uh, my return next week or even before, contact me. We'll go through the streets, we'll go through it with our forester, we'll go through it with the contractor, and we'll look at each street. Uh, as far as replacement plan, uh, I don't have one specific for these streets. I don't expect this work to start till a little bit later in the June, in June. Um, but certainly in, um, in the fall, we will be able to do with street, uh, replacement trees on all three streets. Provided residents, uh, on the streets want them.
So Lynn, thank you for the offer, Mr. Lapore. Don't mean to be so informal. Thank you for the offer to walk the streets, but when these contracts do go out, is that raised? Uh, about preserving as much as we can, um.
It is, and and a lot of these, uh, end up being if and where directed, so it's not necessarily cast in stone at all that certain trees will be removed.
I'm sorry, say that again, certain tree?
Sometimes the trees are if and where directed, but we will make a final evaluation at the, prior to the construction.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering why that can't be done, uh, by you and by the contractor.
Well, well, because the contractor isn't selected to the project is bid, so, um, again, this can be done. Uh, there aren't any trees at this point that we've designated to be removed.
Okay.
Without going through each one on the street and talking to each property owner where those trees are located.
And you have found that out before that, you know, in speaking with the property owners about preserving or not preserving the trees.
That's correct.
And is that something that can be added to these bid specifications now to preserve as much as possible?
Um, I I it it can be, and we'll always look to ways to save trees. Uh, it ends up being costly to remove and, um, costly to replace. So if we can save, uh, the monies, we we will do that.
All right, thank you. And let's see, I did make a note also about the, uh. I thank, uh, Mr. Charles for bringing up the concern about the, um. The beacon, the beacon lights, the LED beacon lights. This has been an issue for many years. Uh, I remember raising this, uh, you know, I know the woman has retired, Ms. Flores, uh, you know, with a grant with that, uh, years ago. Uh, Ron Charles had asked where the placement of these beacons are, and thank you, Melinda Werka. Um, because it did seem a safety concern. This is right along our main street at Babcock, Community House and Edison's, uh, Middle School driveway, Park Terrace, uh, at the Dunkin' Donuts. What we found, uh, years ago was students, of course, are coming out of Edison Middle School and just crossing Main Street. There is no crosswalk there, so we were requesting beacons to be placed. And, um, I'm really pleased, I'm, it's unfortunate that it has taken so long, but I am really pleased to see, um. That, uh, this is finally moving forward. The other concern, and this may go to some of the other questions about parking, is that cars from the businesses along Main Street were parking on Main Street right in front of Liberty Middle. I'm I'm sorry, uh, Edison Middle School. And that really prohibited any, if children were crossing the street, it was, uh, certainly obscured their line of vision. Uh, crossing at that, uh, coming out of that driveway. So, um, you know, I think that issue about parking is so much grander than the conversation we're going to have here. I wanted to thank the Police and Traffic Bureau because I know that there were so many complaints on the CVS parking lot, overnight parking there. That was cleared, cleaned up nicely, and I think we just have to continue to do that along Main Street, Valley Road. Um, I know that I was out on Saturday in Tompkins Street and Valley Road on one of the townwide cleanup events for Earth Day. And there were cars with flat tires on Tompkins Street and another one that had been parked right in front of Luna Stage that did not belong there either. So I would, um, really ask the police department to look into that. About, uh, parking and and helping, uh, people with their parking spaces and having those cars that, uh, don't belong there removed. And to continue that as a quest. I kind of jumped around there. Um. Thanking Anthony Puglisi for the drug takeback day. We started this, uh, council meeting with sustainable jersey points, and we do get points because the township does that as well, as long as the shred days. And I also wanted to thank the county. Uh, I know that there had been an announcement that the vaccination and testing site was going to close. And when the new variant surfaced, I really appreciate that the vaccination center at the Kmart Plaza remained open for, uh, vaccination and testing. So thank you for that. Um. Conversation about the, um, I hear the frustration in Ms. Adams' voice too about the parking. Um. Again, I don't think that's something we're going to resolve right here at a council meeting, but that is a conversation that we do have to have with the police and engineering. Um, and seeking ways to help the residents, uh, with parking issues that they find on both ends of the, uh, on both ends of the corridor. Uh, Joe Krakovia had asked questions about the publicly noticed meeting. I did not believe that we were in violation of attending the Economic Development Meeting. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't recall what the conversation was at that point, but it was a publicly noticed meeting and, um. Everyone is invited to attend. Uh, the agenda with the planning board, the exec- executive session was on the, uh, agenda. And again, that was out of, not something that I I looked at, uh, or scrutinized the way you did. And I guess we are going to have a conversation or if someone was going to pull the resolution on the, uh, library to have that conversation about why we're moving in that direction. Unless Mr. Gross or Mr. Trent wants to tackle that now.
Council President, uh, if Mr. Trank is on, I think, you know, we can either address that now or when when the resolution is pulled.
All right, we can wait and council, uh, other council members, any comments or questions?
I am on now, I apologize if I, uh, missed, I I was just taking an emergency phone call, I apologize.
No, not at all, uh, Mr. Trank, we were talking about the resolution about the library. We want to discuss some of the questions that were raised now or what, uh, if the resolution is pulled.
So again, um, just briefly, the the resolution is consistent with the actions the council has taken in the past. Uh, to obtain sixty-five affordable units of housing on the existing library site. This will not occur until the new library is constructed and, uh, the current library moves to Ten Rooney. Obviously, that's probably about nine months or so away. Uh, we're, we have on the agenda tonight to rebid, uh, because we're, uh, you know, obviously want to get the best contractor at the most responsible price, uh, possible. So that's on for tonight. And, uh, obviously, the existing library site will become vacant and what we, it is part of our affordable housing. Uh, is commit because this is immediately adjacent to rent a house and obviously the municipal complex, that this would be, uh, an excellent site for a much-needed. Um, under the Lands and Buildings Act, we are specifically permitted to do it in this manner that is proposed. Uh, and it's been vetted by outside council, as well as we've done it before, we did it on Tompkins. When we, uh, feeded to Mr. Albert in order to get seventeen affordable units as part of the Selecto Flash Fiddleman Development, um, affordable housing units there. So, so again, the administration is confident that this is consistent with what the council has approved in the past. And this is critical in timing-wise because one of the things that Mr. Albert was successful in obtaining were what's called nine percent tax credits. Those are heavily, uh, competitive, uh, and as a result of, uh, certain efforts and assistance by, uh, our, um, state legislatures and the Lieutenant Governor. Uh, the Albert Group was successful in getting them. However, they do have to put these sixty-five units in service. And so by moving forward, uh, adopting the resolution authorizing the contract tonight, that'll allow us to, uh, continue and get this process rolling as quickly as possible. Again, the library will never close until it moves to Ten Rooney, so everything is kind of, um, integrated, uh, in terms of timing and whatnot. But if we don't have a pathway to get the nine percent tax credits, which Mr. Albert currently has as part of the, uh, as part of his approvals, then the project is not, um, will not be viable. And, um, so that's why this is of importance. I I heard one, uh, member of the public say something about, um, the Albert Group. And again, all I can say is, and and this is, uh, been before this council, before the last council, before other councils. Um, our, our, uh, the administration's experience with the Albert Group on Central Avenue, which was fallow for thirty-five years. An environmental nightmare, uh, has been extremely positive. He has delivered, he's delivered quality, uh, projects, they're over-subscribed with waitlists, waitlist and with affordable housing, which is desperately needed, uh, throughout this region. So, um, so again, we obviously believe this is consistent with the township obligations. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Trank. Councilwoman Mute Brown, I.
Thank you, Council President. Um, just, um, for the sake of time, um, I would ask that the resolutions that are going to be pulled, that were, um, addressed by the public, that we answer those during, um, the time that we pull them. Um, again, I am asking for some courtesy. I literally am sitting here with a pulse oximeter, um, monitoring myself. So I would ask that you please, um. If you want me to share those that we're gonna pull, and if any of those pertain to the public comments. That we take them out of order and not, not address them at this time, but when we pull them. Would you like me to read the resolutions that I am pulling?
No, we're really just responding to public comments.
I do understand that, but my point to you is that I am losing my breath.
Councilwoman, you should, you should, you should take, if you don't feel well, you should excuse yourself from the meeting. You shouldn't stay on the meeting, you really shouldn't, if you feel that ill, just for yours, for your sake.
I am staying on the meeting because there are some items on the, on the agenda that are important to me as an elected official. So I am asking that if there are public comments that were raised regarding the resolutions that I've asked to be pulled. That we have those discussions at that one time and not have everybody discuss them at the same time. For, for the sake of my health, I understand that it is my choice to be here, but I am also asking for your consideration. I don't think that's a lot to ask.
We can pull your resolutions, I, that's fine, it seems like it goes hand in hand with the comments that we're making at public.
I, I completely understand that, Council President, what I'm saying to you is that if we're gonna ask the, Mr. Trent to discuss. Or Mr. Laporte to discuss those at responding to the public comment, and then again. When they're pulled, it's just duplicitous. I'm asking for that consideration.
All right, and I, all right, I understand, I was trying to respond to public comment and taking both into consideration. If you have, yes, Mr. Kaser, are you chiming?
I mean, there's, her councilwoman was request is logical and I don't have a problem with it. And in fact, if she can just let us know what resolutions she wants to pull, maybe we'll solve the problem. So it's not gonna take but a second, I assume, or a few seconds.
I certainly appreciate that. It's a resolution one twenty-one dash twenty-two. One twenty-two dash twenty-two. One twenty-four dash twenty-two. One twenty-six dash twenty-two. One twenty-seven dash twenty-two. And I have to recuse myself on ordinance two six eight three. I'm not asking that you not respond to public comment, I'm just asking that we don't engage in, in that.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, any other comments then on public comment? Or if everyone, if all of your comments are about the resolutions that were just.
Council President, I will respond, one comment from the public. Was directed directly to the Economic Development Commission meeting, and I do want to respond, that meeting is recorded. It should be on our Economic Development Commission webpage for the municipality. I don't know that the minutes have been posted because those have not been approved. Those will not be approved until the next meeting, and then after that point, the minutes will be posted. But it is recorded, and if there are any additional questions, please refer to the recording.
Council President, there, to, to that same comment that was made by our former colleague, Mr. Krikoviac. I was present at that meeting, Mr. Krikoviac, I did realize that after Council President. McCartney joined and started a discussion pertaining to. What I was invited to discuss, which was the cannabis updates. When there was, when, when Council President engaged in conversation, I did mention that it was a violation. Of the OPMA, and I left the meeting immediately. That you will see on the recording, it is a violation, I acknowledged it publicly and I left. So, to your, to answer your question, Mr. Krikoviac, yes, I do respect the OPMA. And transparency and did leave the meeting immediately, as I have done so, if, if we're all in the same email chain or text chain. It is something that I acknowledge publicly and it is recorded. Thank you, Council President. I, I didn't know if you wanted to go in order for everyone to answer other questions, but I will stop here.
It almost seems like you have to finish. You sound like you're really struggling and I would.
I, I, well, I do want to ask the public for a little bit of leniency, I will watch the council meeting. Again, and listen to your public comments and respond to your, to your comments. In greater detail, just some of the things that I wanted to respond to was what Mr. Krikoviac. Raised. I, the parking issue, absolutely understand that that's an issue. And, and to Ms. Malanga, I, I. Without sounding defensive, I do want to just say, at least for myself and for some of my council colleagues. Not caring about our environment. My first act as council. When I was elected four years ago, the biggest act I committed to and voted yes to was the bond to preserve a hundred. And thirty-eight acres, which is Rock Spring, which also allowed the municipality to continue to generate revenue. We have collectively and unanimously. Purchased ninety-four acres from Crestmont. And I have several occasions, and I know that your opinion is that I have not been successful and I am not leading. However, I am one vote, I continue to advocate for the purchase of Ridge Road. It's not something that I have not said publicly, if you go back and you look at my records, I have. I think that that demonstrates that I do care for the administration, for the environment. And when we had the unfortunate. Slide of the mountain. For two seventy-five Northfield Avenue. I did initiate a conversation with the administration to amend our steep slope ordinance. To ensure that we be proactive in having geotechnology. Surveys of all of the cliffs that are property owned and work with those. That are behind residents' homes that they own, so that we can come up with a plan. To ensure that we're being proactive, and I did that in October, following the. Two seventy-five incident, so I do want to say that I, I will take exception to that. Because I do care about the environment and my votes certainly have shown that. And everyone else, I promise to listen again, and you won't believe that I am writing notes on these little pads that you get at the hotel. Because I did not come prepared, not knowing I was going to be. That I was going to be quarantined here, so that's all for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Castellano, thank you for the difference in alphabetical order.
Sure, not, not a problem. So, yeah, a few, few things here, Ms. Adams. Again, this isn't in the resolution, so Bethany Church, we, we did try to accommodate that parking there. And that is something that, you know, we need, we need to keep tweaking. I, I hear Ms. Huerta where she's stating with the Edison Middle School drop off. I'm not sure if that is in, in, in the parking, you know, that, that is because of the time of the parking permit. Or just the times that the church was gracious enough to, to give us a use of the lot. So I just think those were the times that they thought were best at work for them without interfering with their activities. But Mr. Laporte should be able to revisit that, because, you know, Park Drive South, it's, it's a very tough street. My aunt lived up that street for, for many years and, you know, going to visit her, very tough. You know, and she was fortunate, she had a, she had a driveway. So, you know, again, we're having issues with some of these. Body shops and gas stations that are having additional parking. That is spilling out into the neighborhood, that's also an issue on Franklin Street. And I had addressed that with Ms. Valdez in a conversation a couple of weeks ago. It's something that Chief Abbott is aware of, and I can only tell residents, if there, you see someone parking. Out on the street, then you need to, I mean, that's been there longer than forty-eight hours, you need to call. And you need to call. The, the police will come, let them know, give them the plate number of. They're not supposed to be there longer than forty-eight hours, so you, you can call that in and those cars will be removed. But you have to call it in, and you could also go on our website to, to put in any parking complaint. That you, that you may have, but it's, it's an area, Ms. Adams in zoning, I know she's been out there. Going to court with some of these situations, and so that's been frustrating. Because court always doesn't turn out the way we hope it will with some of these offenses. So something we're working on with the Downtown Alliance. Ms. Brill, we've been working on, well, we will be working on with Mr. Gross, a parking authority. You know, we talk about Mr. Gross this evening, but he has a wealth of experience, one of his experiences has been. Creating the Parking Authority in South Orange. And we look forward to him as we develop our downtown further within the next year or two. That, you know, that, that he will be assisting us with that because he is the one that created the Parking Authority in South Orange. And that's will be a great revenue for the township when that is created. So I, I will express the others' concerns to particular resolutions when we get to them. Because I want to be mindful to my colleague. Another issue is cargo vans, I know the chief has. You know, construction van should not be in your neighbor's parking, that we have an ordinance for that. We've been finding that people have been coming home and bringing vans, and they're not supposed to be there, which forces other vehicles out in the street. Downtown Alliance has also been working on fifteen-minute parking and twenty-minute. Or two, two-hour parking in certain areas, which I know will help Miss Beer sleep down by her new location, we're excited to have her there. And that's it, I'll keep, I'll keep that short, there's some other comments, but they could be addressed during the resolutions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
And thank you, and thank you all for coming on the call this evening, it's important that you, we are made aware of all these items.
Thank you, Councilman Brotherford.
Thank you, Council President, so just to, and, and to my colleague, Councilwoman Matu Brown, wish she was speedy recovery, a full recovery. And I certainly do agree with making the accommodations for you. We are going to leave for later comment. The, the discussion about the library moving, the Mr. Gross's contract. And then the, the trees being removed in one sixteen twenty-two. So I will not comment on those now. I think Mr. Malanga, Kevin Malanga. Has some very specific questions about a performance bond, and I, I just want to make sure that. Mr. Laporte, Mr. Gross, or Mr. Trink is prepared to answer that when we get to, to that. Resolution. You know, it's hard to kind of talk about, some of these things are so connected. I think, you know, I think the parking issue has been talked about enough, I'm gonna let it go in interest of time. And I'll look forward to having my comments on when we pull these resolutions, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Brotherford, Councilman Williams, any other comments?
Apologize, I was muted, I think everything can be reserved to when we get to discussion on the actual resolutions and ordinances. So thank you, everyone, West Orange, thank you for calling in, dialing in, and then sharing us your feedback. Thank you.
Councilman Matu Brown, your hand is raised, no, okay, counts, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, that you were next.
Right, I just, I just wanted to, Mr. Charles had inquired about the reason for the rejection of bids. In a resolution that I happen to have prepared, and I, I don't have the number of it handy, but it dealt with the. The network managed services or IT services, and I'm not, he may not have read. Completely or correctly the resolution, but the resolution itself contains the reason. All of the bids were rejected because the proposals submitted. Were in excess of the budgeted amount that we have available. One of the bids that was submitted had another defect, but all of them were rejected for the reason that they exceeded the budgeted amount for the proposed contract. So, and that's per statute, so I just want to make that clear, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, I did, I missed that in my notes, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Okay, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, April fifth, twenty twenty-two. Report, report of Township Officers, none, reading of petitions and communications and bids. Correspondence from Dr. Robert Bagoff, Planning Board Chair regarding ordinance twenty-six seventy-eight dash twenty-two. Land Use Regulations, Chapter Twenty-Five, Section Twenty-Eight, Steep Slope and Natural Futures Ordinance. On the bills. And resolutions, I have the resolutions that Councilwoman Matu Brown is pulling, are there any other resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yes, so. Not necessarily pulling to vote against, but have a couple of questions on one oh nine twenty-two. And that's it, that's the only one that wasn't flagged by me.
I think, okay, are you not pulling that, but do you have a question, do you want to ask your question now?
So this is for. Project on Eagle Rock Avenue. Is, I guess it's the assisted living facility. I have a couple of questions about. You know, in reading this, I'm a little. As, as an assisted living facility, they're planning, and, and I don't know who the right person to answer these questions are, but the administration will figure that out. There are three loading docks required, there's one, I mean, they need, they need a variance for that. Why do we need three loading docks for an assisted living facility? And then in the recitals, I guess this is page one, where they list all of the variances, beginning with number four. They're looking for a variance for lot coverage greater than permitted. They need sixty-six point eight percent, sixty percent is permitted. They need a variance for the parking spaces, so that they can be, I guess, the front yard, I guess that's gonna face Eagle Rock. I just mentioned the loading docks, they want half the number of parking spaces that are required. And they also want a variance from the requirement of the fifty-foot buffer from the adjoining residential zone. Can someone explain to me why? Why that's a good idea? I mean, I, I'm not trying to vote against it, I understand that we need taxes, I understand that we need assisted living facility, it's a great. It, it could be a good use of the space, I know it's not properly zoned, and they need a variance for that, that's not a big deal to me. But it seems like this is going to impact the neighborhood. In a, in a meaningful way, so help me understand that better.
Mayor, welcome to this council meeting, you came on just as that question was being asked, I don't know if that's why you came on.
No, Council President, I missed some of Councilmen's concerns, are we talking about the project on Eagle Rock Avenue?
Yes, that was the.
Yeah, so I wasn't part of the presentation they made at the zoning board, but the project. but the project, uh, some of the concerns that councilmen references were fully vetted by the zoning board in, uh, the several hearings they had prior, prior to its approval. So, um, though always legitimate concerns when it comes to traffic and parking and all those other issues, those are, those are matter for the land use boards, and it was, uh, fully vetted by, uh, by the zoning board and approved. So I, I don't know, having not read the record of the zoning board or have been present during any of the hearings, I'm not sure it's fair that, uh, I comment on, on something that I can't speak intelligently to, but, um, but I, I will say that, uh, as we know, there are several of these type of facilities in town. And generally speaking, uh, Mr. Kaiser could kind of opine on this if he wanted to, but generally assisted living facilities are considered inherently beneficial uses and, uh, have a much higher threshold to deny them. So, um, I'm not really sure that any evidence was presented during the hearings that would have lend itself to denying this application. So.
That, that's absolutely correct.
The facility, uh, the atrium, I can't remember the last time it operated. It's been so many years now. So I think it's a good use for that property. The alternative would have been housing, which raises any number of additional questions and more legitimate, you know, questions similar to what the councilman raised. So I think from a, a global perspective, I think assisted living is a great use for that property because the alternative would have been a dense housing project. Um, and, and again, uh, you know, the courts have consistently ruled them as inherently beneficial uses and, and really hard to deny. So, um, those concerns are always legitimate, but they're candidly, they're for land use boards and not, uh, and not the council, which is why the state has a system set up for the land use board to specifically hear these, uh, to hear these issues.
Uh, thank you, ma'am.
So, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and Mr. Kaiser, I guess, for that, uh, limited, uh, response. My, what I said in my open, and I, I understand the mayor, uh, may not have heard that part. I'm not, I didn't pull this to vote against it, and I'm not saying it's not necessarily good use of the space. I'm just trying to understand why we would allow that level of impact on that neighborhood, and that, that was the question. I mean, there are multiple variances that do impact that neighborhood. I'm just, I'm curious.
Well, but tha- that's not a, it's a planning board issue, not a council issue. I mean, it's.
But we're here to approve this construction agreement that's based on those variances that we're given.
Right. I, I, I understand that. And I, I don't, this was prepared by Mr. Trink. I feel hesitant to, to go into it. Okay, good. I just want to make sure.
So, so again, councilman, this is been fully approved, vetted, been the subject of a non-appeal, the, there was no appeal filed to the zoning board. I think it's the zoning board. Um, uh, hearings, and that's what happens at the hearings. They have traffic studies, they have impact studies. They go the whole, uh, I'm correct, Council President, this was zoning board, not the planning board, right?
Yes.
Right. So every aspect of this agreement was contemplated, vetted, and approved by the zoning board of adjustment. So every one of you in the council have appointees there. They heard it. I don't know what the vote was, but, um, a- as, as the mayor said, and Mr. Kaiser said, this is an inherently beneficial use. Clearly, uh, this, this site has been, uh, fallow for at least three, four, or five years. Went through bankruptcy proceedings, um, and, uh, it's on a made road. It's on a county road. So the county also, uh, is part of the process by which it's approved. So there's nothing in the, um, developer's agreement, which is what you're looking at, that is not consistent with what was approved by the zoning board. So.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, clearly I haven't articulated my question properly, or maybe this isn't the, the, the right group to answer that question. I'm not challenging what the zoning board did. I'm not, I'm trying to understand why we would. If the zoning board makes that recommendation, and, you know, just picking the parking, for example, if we're supposed to have a hundred parking spots, and we're gonna have half, that's not gonna have some impact on that neighborhood? I mean, we just had people here earlier talking about issues with regard to parking in their neighborhood. Um, are we gonna now have people trying to park on Eagle Rock Avenue? Or are we gonna have people try parking those side streets? I mean, you know, they didn't pull a hundred slots out of the air.
But, but you're, this is, and Mr. Lapore is on this call. He could probably comment also. But understand, this is an assisted living facility. This is not, this, first of all, they're not gonna park on Eagle Rock because the chief of police will take care of all that. They're not parking on a county road. It's not allowed. And they're not gonna park in the neighborhood. These, th- this is a facility that is, again, all of these issues are vetted before a board of, of jurisdiction to do this. All we're doing is embodying it in a legal document that's recorded and that can be enforced. So, uh, again, obviously, if you want to listen to the zoning board hearings or see their minutes, any aspect, normally they are transmitted to the municipal clerk for distribution, but you're certainly free to see anything. And certainly, we'll be glad, it's all subject to Oprah, we'll be glad to make the entire file available to you, all these meetings are recorded. So, um, so I, I don't know what else to say other than, you know, I, I've never heard of a developer's agreement, uh, being the subject of any second review, because it's all done by the board that's an autonomous board that considers it.
Thank you for that, uh, answer. I, I don't think it really gets to what I'm getting at. Perhaps I'm not articulating myself clearly. Um, uh, you know, I thought I did. I thought I preambled properly as well.
I guess what, what I'm not understanding, councilman, is, wh- wh- you know, even using your example of the parking, obviously, I can't respond as to the analysis that went on before the zoning board because I'm not council of the zoning board, and I wasn't at the meeting. So I can't give you a more holistic answer to your question. Um, clearly, uh, you could, all those answers are available to any member of the public and, and whatnot. I can't give you hook, line, and sinker as to the, you know, and, and I wouldn't try as to what happens before, uh, a planning or a zoning board. But, so I apologize if this.
No, no worries. Thank you, Mr. Trink.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, did you have the?
Yes, thank you. So, so just to remember, atrium, you know, when that was there in its heyday. What, you can't hear me?
Well, just check your wire on your. Try it again.
Can you hear me now?
Robot voice.
Why don't you go to Councilwoman Matu Brown, and I'll come back.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yeah, thank you. I just for, um, for my, um, council colleagues, um, um, benefit, I think that, and, and I don't always have the opportunity to listen to every, um, meeting because it's, it's a recorded meeting. Um, I hope that at some point we move them into the next century into a video recorded meeting. Um, but if you, um, reach out to the secretary of the, uh, boards, she can send you via, um, uh, Gmail link, the entire recording um, and the minutes, um, as well. So I, I, I do think that maybe your answers, your, the answers that you're looking for may be, um, in those recordings as well. I would just imagine, um, I didn't listen to the entirety of it, but the design of the facility itself, being an assisted living facility, you couldn't necessarily, um, uh, no, bring, bring patients out in an ambulance, you know, in the same dock that you would bring food or, um, supplies or furniture in. Um, but I certainly, um, have to trust, and I did speak to my appointee on the zoning board when those decisions are made. So I was filled in in that regard, but do recommend that you reach out to, uh, the secretary, so she can, uh, email you the actual report. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Hear me now?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Oh, good. Yeah, I just signed off. Uh, just let me know that voice goes on. I'll just, there's, I guess, when it's windy out. Um, so yes, so the atrium, when it's in, it was in its heyday, had got hundreds of carts, uh, coming in and out of that parking lot, and no one ever dared parked on Eagle Rock Avenue or within the neighborhoods. Um, with that kind of, uh, assisted living, I, I, I don't see even a lot of the residents even having a, a car to begin with. And I also know the shape of that lot and that property is just so nu- unique uh, because the way it was cut and zoned from years back when, um, it used to be the Cabana Club in town and, and part of the swim club is a big property that was divided for that neighborhood that is, uh, behind, uh, the eight, where the atrium sits now. So, um, looking forward to that blemish on Eagle Rock Avenue to be, be redone. So, um, any traffic concerns, I just want to share with my colleague that, that, you know, years ago, it was, you know, very vibrant, very vibrant, uh, um, catering hall, and, uh, it didn't seem to interfere then. So I, I would, would think this, this, uh, use is a much more practical use for, especially for the neighborhood. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, and in high demand. Councilwoman Matu Brown? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yeah, so are any other resolutions being pulled?
To address the ones that were pulled?
Well, we, yeah, I want to take a motion.
Yes.
To approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution one twenty-one dash twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with John Gross, the chief financial officer, for the period of January first, twenty twenty-two, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Um, once again, thank you, um, to all of my council colleagues for their understanding and support, in consideration of my attendance and my voice, um, and presence, despite my condition. And so, to the public, please bear with me if I am labored in my speech. However, I think it's fairly important to speak to. I do, um, by way of this response, want to respond to, um, those who, um, um, asked the question about, um, how can Mr. Gross do the BA CFO here and, uh, part-time be CFO in Dover? Um, it was my initial question when it was initially proposed, but I will say, um, and testify that Mr. Gross does not sleep, even on vacation. So that's how, um, it does not matter how often we ask the question, um, and how many times he's got to clarify. He is continuously and has always been responsive. Um, the, the other consideration for me when I voted, um, for him to assist Dover, and I say assist Dover, was because I also, um, helped, um, as, uh, an alderman and the mayor, um, when they were running. Um, and Mayor Blackwell, I, I think that's her, I'm saying her name properly, is a woman of color, and the first woman of color mayor in Dover. Um, and the alderman that I assisted is a Latino, um, man. And I know firsthand from them that they were not even able to sign a payroll check because their administration left. They had no CFO, they had no VA. They were in dire need. It was that consideration and the promise that Mr. Gross, from Mr. Gross and our administration, that he would always be present, and I will say that he has been. And Mr. Gross knows that I am very fond of him. I've said publicly, we didn't start out with a good relationship um, because I came on the council with many, um, preconceived notions. Um, but I have a great deal of respect for this administration and how they function. The reason I pulled this, however, is that several things. When I, I read the contract, and I, and I want to also, um, just say that it, it's multi-leveled for me, the considerations. Um, first and foremost, um, I, 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 it was said in public comment. We all know that, um, our mayor, uh, the administration is going to change, whoever it's going to be. I don't believe should be straddled with this, um, obligation of an employment contract. Secondly, Mr. Gross and I do often talk about finances. Obviously, he is our CFO. And while this year our budget will be manageable, next year it's going to be chaos for any one of us who are running to assume the position and role of mayor. That, to me, is extremely concerning fiscally. I've been in the position of, of, you know, going over budgets for the last four years, and it is painstakingly difficult to find ways to cut. And so having that understanding gives me great pause. Secondly, the fact that we, we had employees, um, uniformed, so men and women, who have been out of work and have filed litigation, and I, I don't know where we are with that, but I cannot in good conscience say yes to this contract when I know that we still have our first responders and some non-uniform employees whose matters have not been appropriately or, or not appropriately or not, I can't speak to because I don't know the status, but I know that it's, it's yet not to be resolved. And then lastly, I've been, been in quarantine for the last four days, have had a lot of time to read and research. And, um, I understand that longevity was taken away from, um, from the employments, um, before, before Mr. Gross was employed. And so again, in good conscience, I cannot look at this contract and then look at all the other employees that were hired thereafter who do not have the benefit of longevity and say that I am okay with it. I am not. To the question that was raised with respect to the annual increases averaging seven point seven percent, um, I, I initially, um, when I came on the council, had concerns about the increase in the contract, but came to learn very quickly that we are a civil service municipality. And because we are so, there are contractual obligations statutorily that we must meet. This is the case from Mr. Gross as well. So whether, um, you see increases like this in any other organization, private or public, I, I'd ask that you consider the fact that we are civil service and we are held to a different standard. Um, and, and that is where I am with this. Mr. Gross, in no way does this mean that I have no, um, any less respect for you. Um, we've had plenty of conversations where I have expressed publicly and privately and my appreciation and my gratitude for your service to our township. I think you do phenomenal work, but because of those reasons, I, I am, I pulled it because I can't, I can't support it under, under the structure. Um, I'll allow my council colleagues to chime in as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, I see your hand is raised.
Okay, let me know if, uh, my voice is.
Yes, you're, you're good. Thank you. Oh, but now you just muted yourself.
But I, but I didn't, so that's weird. Um, so, uh, I'm gonna ditto on a lot of the comments my colleague just made. Uh, Mr. Gross, like, you, you're, you're there all the time. I, I mean, the weekends, there, there's not an hour goes by. Uh, you filled in, uh, with Mr. Sayer's deporting. Um, and that was with tough shoes to fill and, uh, a seamless process. So we appreciate that as well. You know, the, the ma- the mayor's here, I know he, he recommended the contract. I'm not sure if he wants to say a few words, but the, the only, you know, I, I could see the reasoning, reasoning for the increase in, in the salary because, uh, to accommodate for the other position, for the savings, uh, for the other position. I know we've had, uh, additional part-time or even full-time help in, for, uh, the finance part of it. But the one thing that I'm. But the one thing that I'm caught on with this contract is a is a longevity piece because the other employees can't, you know, that that was, you know, can't be offered that. So that's the only part of this that that I'm having an issue with. Other than that, you do an outstanding job. I appreciate you compensating, you know, for the past year or two. You're always there when we need you. Your experience, I'm really disappointed. Some of the comments I've heard earlier because your experience just can't be matched. I mean, you've been a mayor, you you you've been a BA, you've done it, done it all. We're very, very lucky to to have you. But the one piece I'm having an issue with is the longevity piece. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mayor, there was a segue. If you would like to make a comment there.
Sure, Council President. Obviously, always interested in hearing what some of the remaining council members you know, questions they may have or concerns. So look, I understand the the difficulty of these issues, having, you know, been a councilman and 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 knowing sometimes certain resolutions on the agenda are tough. And I I get that there's you know, there's multiple sides and levels to these issues, and sometimes they're very difficult. And certainly, the administration doesn't take light of even putting this on the agenda. We recognize the difficulty that the council members have in in considering this and and sometimes the optics for the public, but but make, you know, no, no, no disrespect to some of the concerns raised by the public. West Orange is a town of over three hundred employees and fifty thousand people, and i- if you think it doesn't take talented people to run a government of nearly ninety million budget in a twenty-four-hour day job, it takes talented people. And and I don't think any of us would have to ask too many of our friends in other towns and in government to know that there's a huge void of talented people with the proper certifications out there in government and a pool of the people that are disappearing daily. We are lucky to have John Gross here, and I don't say that lightly because anyone on his council and anyone in the public knows of my relationship with Jack Sayers and my deep affection and respect for Jack and and having Jack retire was was a huge burden to overcome for the administration because, you know, Jack had been here so long, he understood it, and he was really talented at what he does. But but as, you know, both council members, Matu Brown and Castellino mentioned, John brings a lot of talent to the job. Besides the certified CFO, which we require by law, as a constitutional officer, we have to have that. Besides having the certification, he's he's really good at it. So it's hold on, I'm having my own problems here tonight. So I understand that the difficulty council has in these in these particular issues, but we've been able to fill two roles with one person, again, because as Councilwoman Matu Brown kind of joked, John works around the clock and he does. And and I can tell you firsthand that he does, and he's a huge asset to this administration and to the community. Again, I don't want to make light of what we're asking, but I also don't want to undersell the fact that although politics is entertainment to a lot of people, we are a town of fifty thousand people and over three hundred employees with a lot of responsibilities every day. And John Gross is serving in the the two most important roles in that government and and doing so with professionalism and expertise that right now, at this particular moment in time, is 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 irreplaceable. And as Councilwoman Castellino mentioned, when when Jack retired, we didn't miss a beat because John had, you know, John stepped right in. So I understand this is a big ask, but but in any organization, public or private, you you have to keep the people that bring a talent to the running of that operation. And and no one, forget the politics, no one watching this meeting should assume that government just happens automatically. It doesn't. And you could look at any number of towns around the state, around the country that have issues running because it doesn't happen automatically. It takes talented people to do that, and we're lucky to have John. And and I know what I'm asking is a lot, but I I ask it with sincerity and with honesty and and with deep respect for John and deep respect for the difficult decisions each of you have as elected officials.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I I wanted to, my comment would be to thank Councilwoman Matu Brown for her comment or your insight on Dover. I appreciate that. I don't, I don't see that that is an issue because we do know that John's performance has been outstanding. And during, also during that time, Mayor, yes, he did step in that role for the business administrator seamlessly. And everyone was grateful for that. And I'm not sure if it was last year or the year before where we also created an IT department that John was overseeing or continues to oversee and improve and upgrade. So his his talent is vast and and we appreciate that. I do not agree with the comment that was made that because of contracts that have not been, or I'd say agreements that have not been settled with the unions has anything to do with this particular contract with Mr. Gross. I think they're two separate issues. I had shared that I did have empathy when we had the economic downturn back in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight where we were laying employees off, we were demoting employees, and I had made a recommendation that my council colleagues at that time took a ten percent decrease in consideration with what our employees were going through. I share that the empathy, but in this particular instance, I do not believe that what we were just going through with the litigation and the mandates with police and fire and employees have anything to do with this contract. I still believe that John does an outstanding performance and that he has assumed both roles, that we are not paying an additional person to fill that other role. And as it says in the agreement, that there is no increase in that base pay for him to do so. Thank you. I see two hands up. Councilman, Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Let me begin by saying, I I don't know how John does it, but John clearly does it. Some of the commentary and public comment was with regard to the number of jobs he has and the number of hours in a day. I, you know, I have no idea how he does it, but he does. He 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 responds to every single one of my queries when I've needed to meet with him. We met. And he's gone above and beyond the call of duty with regard to me, and that's all I can go on. I come from a banking background, and generally speaking, in that kind of a world, when you have someone who consistently meets or exceeds expectations, they generally get very well compensated. And it's not an issue. It's just understood that that's how you you have to retain talent and you have to reward talent. I reached out, I would, I would, so I would like to vote for Mr. Gross to you know, get all these benefits that are included in this resolution. I would like to vote for that. I think I think he's done an outstanding job. What I have a a difficult time with are a couple of things, some of which has already been spoken about, so I won't beat a dead horse. But I just will relay it for the record. I think Council President's analogy about asking the council to take a ten percent cut in pay at a time when we were demoting and laying off people. It speaks to bearing the burden of our neighbors with them being in this thing together. And so still having folks that are out on unpaid leave and not having that satisfied or settled, I think, does not speak to that. So, you know, my preference would be to table this. I, you know, it's no secret I'm running for mayor. I understand what this could mean. But I do also think that John is one of the most talented guys in that role. He's, the township of West Orange has benefited from his wisdom and insight and experience. And I think that has to be acknowledged. So I would prefer to table this until we settle some other matters, one of which is actually on the agenda tonight in executive session, or at least could be it from what I understand. Because I I I don't think the the pay is the issue. I think he's done. I I I can't say it enough. I think he's done a great job. I think the issue is timing. And I think the issue is the the politics around some of the other unsettled matters that we have. So, you know, for those reasons, I would prefer to table this. And, you know, I I know Councilwoman Williams, you know, probably has something that she wants to to weigh in. So I'm happy to wait until after everyone has spoken before we decide to to entertain motions. And I do believe Council President wants to respond as well. But I I I don't think taking this up tonight is the right time to take it up. And I'll I'll leave my comments there. Thank you, Council President.
You know, Councilman Rutherford, I won't say how much I appreciate that you're saying that because that executive session where we are supposed to, that was carried from our last meeting. If you recall, it was past midnight and we decided not to go in executive session. And we were supposed to hear from the administration on where we were with the negotiations. Counts I C, our mayor. Yes, please.
So, Council President, thank you. Just for clarification, there are no employees out on unpaid leave. All employees have been brought back. Were were some on unpaid leave? Yes. It was because they chose not to get vaccinated, which was their choice. But the administration's position was that if we're going to send first responders into people's homes, they should be vaccinated. All that said, in lengthy conversations and many meetings and angry people and all that stuff that comes with that, they've been brought back to work. So there are still open issues about how some of the back pay gets resolved in accordance with civil service guidelines, and that'll play out with civil service direction. But it's not accurate to say that employees are still out on unpaid leave. Any employees that were out because they were not getting vaccinated are back to work with a very strict testing policy. So always important in these in these discussions, but I just want the council and the public to be to understand the truth. They're back to work. We're still fighting over back pay, which is, you know, understandable, and we're gonna do what we can to be fair and mitigate that with civil services direction. But there is no employee still out on unpaid leave at this time.
To to correct myself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the issue that was created by having them out on unpaid leave. So I may not have articulated that well, but there are still some unresolved issues with regard to those that were out on unpaid leave, even though they are back now. So that's what causes the timing issue for me. Thank you.
And so, Councilman Rutherford, what I was going to suggest is that we hold this vote. And when we go to executive session, maybe some of your questions will be answered before we take a vote on this, because I still do not see both issues overlapping. I thought I saw another hand up. Councilwoman Williams, any comment? No. Councilwoman Matu Brown, your hand is back up.
Yes, I I am going to say that, and I I hear you, Council President. I'm not comparing the two. I just said in good conscience, I can't do one while they're still outstanding matters. I also stated that we are no longer, we no longer offer longevity. It's just simply not just to any other employee in the municipality at all. And I also stated that our budget is not going to be a pretty budget next year. It's going to be very complicated. And we are talking about longevity pay, which includes pension increases. That is my issue. So I am not going to be supportive to table this for a discussion. But that's just obviously my position. Just want to be clear that I am not comparing one apples to apples. I am very clear on what it is that I'm stating. I just can't in good conscience go forward. The police contract, not just the police contract, but all union contracts took almost, they were out of contract for five years. And it took a very long time for for them both to come to the table and have an agreement. And I know that there are two parties there. However, I just do not think that this is the right way to go under these circumstances, considering our budget is going to require increases. And this is something that we should all be aware of. And I do not support the fact that we have to give preference to, and again, I know that he's doing two jobs for this township. And if there's a base increase in the salary per statute, I'm I'm fine with that. If we want to consider, you know, a a base increase to include the BA position that he is doing. But the longevity pay is is greatly impactful. And and as a fiduciary, an elected fiduciary, and and even making that decision without even, who has here of my council colleagues, because maybe I missed it, but were we given an impact, financial impact on what that would look like for us? I'm not ready to make that decision, and so I'm not going to support tabling it. That's just my position. Thank you.
Okay, and I wasn't suggesting tabling, and I was suggesting going into executive session first before we put a vote on this resolution.
I'll I'll sec, I'll second that. I'll wait for executive session so we can have some other conversation, because.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution one twenty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution of local support of proposed cannabis-related business chemistry LLC. Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Thank you. I see Mr. Moon. At this time, if Madam Moderator can bring on the representatives from chemistry, and as they're coming on, I just want to share that this is a resolution that that I am very proud to support. As some of you may or may not know, I sit as the chair of the West Orange Cannabis Task Force Advisory Committee, along with several stakeholders of our township, including our chief of police, council, my council colleague, Councilwoman Castellino, and parents of different school-aged children and and putting that that task force together. I did so so that we had diverse voices at the table. And in introducing cannabis to the township three years ago, I I remember I was told by a former Board of Ed member that I was committing political suicide. All of my council colleagues will tell you that I do not operate on optics. I operate on how my vision is going to take this town forward. Chemistry is a, are they on yet, Mark? No, I don't see them. Oh, they are. I'm sorry. I'm I'm on a borrowed iPad, so I can't see everyone. One of one of the reasons I also undertook this is because I have been an advocate for social justice and equity. It's the work that I do as a labor leader, as a grassroots organizer. And it's no secret that the state has failed to push that agenda forward. In this case, our task force members agreed that that was going to be our focus. And so chemistry is not only owned by a woman. She's a resident in town. She's a woman of color in town. And she is also involved in social justice and equity work. We've had several discussions. We've met with the task force and very impressed by what they bring. And chemistry is also partnered with a male minority resident who was raised in town. I was happy to learn that as well. So I I want to let the public know that this is some a a resolution that the task force has recommended um, I, I want to let the public know that this is, um, some, a, a resolution, um, that the task force has recommended to the council for their support in order for them to, um, receive a micro-business dispensary license. Um, I will shoot it over to Mark Moon at this time. Thank you so much, Council President.
Uh, Ms. Young, if you could, um, unmute yourself and, and introduce yourself, um, as well as let us know if there's anyone else that's in the attendees that is also going to be participating.
If they can raise their hand, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Before Ms. Young starts speaking, in our resolution, there is no address for this, um, uh, business. Can you tell us which, uh, one we are talking about?
Chemistry is Resolution one twenty-two dash twenty-two. The evaluation report was submitted by Mr. Moon to the council in advance and also posted on the website.
So.
Things park abs, I know, right?
For Park Avenue.
That's correct.
Yes.
That is correct.
Yes.
Excuse me. Yeah, these, and I mentioned this, Mr. Moon, earlier today. The addresses really need to be on the agenda for the public. So they know, because a lot of the public, they don't know to look on the website, so they, they just see it on the agenda. So for moving forward, we need them on the agenda. Thank you.
Ms. Young, you just first let us know if there's anyone else in the attendees that is also going to be, um, appearing on behalf of chemistry.
Right now, it's myself, and I apologize for the unmuting. My foot, my, uh, phone froze. I've been in transportation all day.
So why, why don't you begin by introducing yourself to the members of the county council and talk a little bit about, um, what you're hoping to achieve with chemistry LLC.
I, I'm so sorry to interrupt, Ms. Young. Is it possible for you to please, um, turn on your camera?
I'm sorry, it's not on, um. I'm thinking it's on. I don't, from this format, your format on a council meeting is slightly different than a regular Zoom call. And it is giving me no option except for to unmute chat and minimize disconnect audio.
Madam Moderator, can you switch her over as a panelist? Does she is a panelist?
She is a panelist. Are you on a phone?
I am on a phone. I have just flown in from JFK. Um, and I've been on my phone literally in three hours traffic, watching this council meeting. I have heard everything. And I am a proud member of West Orange, um, after hearing this call today. Um, but I do not, if I, if I can take five seconds, I can go get my laptop. Um, but I am on my cell phone. I apologize for this delay because this was not.
What kind, what kind of phone is it?
It's the Android.
Okay, um, you should have a view camera option.
Have mute chat, chat, raise hand. Scroll down, scroll down, or you just scroll up, and it should be below that.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not giving me any option to do that.
If, if there are no objections, um,
I'll get my laptop because you can't see me run through my house anyway.
Okay, I, if there's no objections, Council President. I just think it's important, um, for the public to also see.
Mr. Moon, are the, are the other applicants on too?
I believe, yes, I believe Ms. Stephchenko is on, and she's going to be appearing on behalf of the other applicant.
While we are waiting for Talia Young to log back on, is there any part of the process, uh, for this presentation that you can talk about now?
Well, you know, I, I, I guess part of this is just an idea of, we wanted to give an opportunity for representatives of both applicants to sort of introduce themselves to the council. Um, and really, it's an opportunity for them to address any questions, concerns, clarifications, that the council may have regarding, uh, the resolution of local support. Um, you know, I, I believe I circulated a copy of, the full copy of the applications, um, with the copy of the evaluation report that was prepared and approved by the, um, the, the cannabis business advisory task force. Um, so it, you know, ultimately, it's just, it's just a chance for, if there's any specific questions or specific concerns that a particular member may have. This is just sort of a forum. Um, there's no formal format or anything that needs to get done. It's just sort of what each member needs to know or wants to know to feel comfortable proceeding, uh, with the applicant.
Mr. Moon, did you send, uh, my colleagues, the, all the operating agreements that I had requested and received? Did you send it to all my colleagues so they could see the breakdown of the ownership of, of the entities for each business? Because that, that's important. They need to see who actually is invested in these businesses.
So my understanding, so one of the, because of the size of the documents, right, I, I, one of them was circulated through a secured link. Um, I believe that, I believe it might have been, it might have actually been chemistry. And, um, because it's sent as a link, as the documents came in, I would update them. So depending on when you accessed it, you would have the, um.
Well, you could forward these to them. I don't think it's such a.
That's fine. I can, yeah, I can, if, if that's a specific question or a specific, um, you know.
No, they should know the, they should know the ownership chain of the ownership. And, and just so you know, um, on this one particular, uh, forty-nine percent is owned by an LLC, um, which I had asked for further documentation of that LLC. That was also broken down to two other LLCs that we got the operating agreement for the actual owners. Because it's important that we, we know, and the owners realize that we don't take this lightly, that, you know, if they're investing in our community. And, uh, even if they are community members, which actually is a big plus for them, uh, we want to know about it. And, and, um, that we want them to understand how, um, important this, you know, this, this is for us. So I was very excited to see that all three owners are West Orange residents, uh, in the case of, uh, chemistry.
So has she dialed back in yet? And can she be transferred over?
On for, I thought I saw her in the attendees. Now, do you see her on? I, I, I thought I saw her for a second on the.
Young, it just says Young. So if you can transfer Young over.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you see me? It's, it's not giving me an option. Like, I, I'm on these calls all the time, and there is no option to allow me to see. Like the camera, it would be normally next to unmute, to the right of unmute. Um, it's just not giving me an option. And I'm on my phone. I passed the code a couple of times. I'm on my, my laptop, which I work on all day. It's just not giving me an action.
Okay, let me try one thing. Hang on.
Yeah, I do see that everyone else has the option of the mic and the video, but under Ms. Young, I, it, there's only the mic option. That's, that's odd. Everyone else has the option.
Okay, let's try this.
There she is.
Wonderful. So, so what was the issue, Madam Moderator? So we can just know.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Is, uh, Ms. Young, if, is Brett joining? If he's in the, um, in the invite, in the, in the, uh, I'm sorry.
No, he's not. Unfortunately, he's not. Uh, he was unable to join. Um, so it's just, it's just me.
No, actually, I just saw him. I'm sorry.
Because he was on there too.
Brett Carroll, can you raise your hand so Madam Moderator can bring you over as a panelist, please? And thank you, public and council, my council colleagues for your patience.
Okay, I'm moving him now. If you can unmute and put on your camera.
Yes, one second. Sorry about that. Hold on.
That's okay. Zoom seconds take a really long time.
How are you guys?
Welcome.
Hi, Brett.
Hello, hey, guys. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for joining us. I know that you, but you weren't available and otherwise occupied. But I, we, we certainly appreciate you making, um, the exception, but we're now seeing, um, your, your ceiling. Okay, there you are. Okay, Mr. Moon.
So, so Ms. Young, why don't we begin with the, just an introduction to the members of the council and sort of discuss a little bit about, um, what your goals are with, um, chemistry LLC.
Okay, so, uh, if I didn't say it earlier, thank you for having us on. We're extremely excited, um, about this opportunity and this endeavor. So, uh, Council President, Council members, um, and the community that we live in and serve, um, thank you for having us. Chemistry is an alternative health and wellness, um, facility that we are very excited to have the opportunity to bring it to West Orange. Um, this was a new adventure for us, and we are extremely excited for a multitude of reasons. Um, one spoken about is the core. We see that this is an opportunity to expand understanding of health and wellness. And we're approaching this as a health and wellness opportunity and expansion on quality of life um, for multiple generations above age. And we're very conscious of the products and the service that we'll provide to this community. So we're balancing our approach on the retail with our social impact, understanding the education, um, and expansion of what this new industry on the East Coast is and how it serves the health and wellbeing of our community. Uh, we'll be located on Park Street, Duesney Park Avenue, um, in the industrial downtown area. And we look to be a part of that industrial business community, um, with not just, uh, keeping our facility operated in, um, in compliance, but also adding to the business district and the beautification of West Orange. Um, being a minority business owner, um, I understand the investment of time and importance that one has on their business and their community, and that you don't do anything alone. So having the opportunity to build a relationship and network in West Orange for the past four years as being a resident here, I was, had the opportunity to meet Brett and understand his passion and interest in this business. Um, I found out about this industry from a policy background. I used to work for Senator Frank Lautenberg, um, for about five, six years. At, at four, I went to a community development bank, and I understood the opportunity. And really, um, going into new ventures and making sure that there was opportunity for women of color and men of color to come into this industry. So we're looking and really understanding the scope and the impact that this will have. Um, and we, we don't take that lightly, not even a little bit. Um, our approach on our business and our approach on our community is definitely weighted in what that opportunity is. Um, so I'm not sure if I answered. I'm like, I'm really excited about this opportunity. We talked so much about what this will bring, um, and not to just this, this, the, the township of West Orange, but the larger community of New Jersey in whole. And the fact that West Orange has really invested into loving the playing field of having an opportunity of a woman-owned business of color, um, here first. And, uh, we're excited about that opportunity.
So if there's any, oh, specific, if any members of the council have any specific questions or any concerns or issues that you would like Ms. Young to address, um, feel free to, you know, raise your hand and pose any questions you may have.
So Talia, I, your application seems so comprehensive, really, uh, and excellent. The, I wanted to ask if you wanted to elaborate on the community impact. Uh, part of that application, please.
Definitely. Um, so one of our approaches in our strategy from entering into this market is going to be on an educational base. Um, one before we actually open our doors, we're going to have a few educational days. Um, and kind of what and how to properly use and why, um, this is a health benefit. Um, after we open, then we actually have a strategy on a social impact wall that's inside of the retail space. Um, strategically to have this open dialogue and conversation. We also look to have opportunities with, um, the local health, the downtown district, um, and the school district on just educational approaches, um, to safely use this product. But I think more importantly, it's really the mature and older generations, um, that we also want to educate on the health benefits and how to properly use and why to properly use. Um, one of the conversations that we had around the customer experience, and I think this is extremely important. We strategically laid our space out to have a more of an intimate conversation and dialogue. Because within this industry, you're always going to be understanding what the product is, what does it serve, how does it serve you? Um, because it's an evolving market. Um, and even the core products that will be serving needs to have some type of under, uh, educational and understanding based on how to use it and the benefits. So we strategically made the space small, intimate with the proper security, um, aspects. When you come in, you're going to be able to be carded, check your ID, and then rechecked again before you actually enter the retail establishment. Um, security is a high priority in the protocols, um, that not only our business will maintain along with the state mandates, and that is evolving. Um, so I think when you, um, Council President, when you talk about, um, the in-depth research, we had to, we had to make sure we, one, were making with this investment. We were going through the proper protocols. We understand, um, this environment and how to properly operate this environment when it comes to security, the capital, the use of the product, um, distribution of the product, and, um, the disregarding of old products. We're taking that, um, in extreme caution and understanding what those processes and procedures are.
Thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Will, Williams, please.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, um, speak on behalf of Ms. Young and some of my personal experiences with her. Um, how she has already been engaged with, uh, contributions to the community of West Orange. So in the application, um, you'll notice that one of the community events that she sponsored, um, was Black Santa at Rock Spring, uh, during the holidays, which was an event that encouraged diversity, uh, a different experience um, for children of color, um, to come and, and have a workshop, um, take family photographs and just have, um, again, an experience that was something different that we had never done before here in West Orange. Um, I recall seeing some social media, um, asking about why there needed to be a differentiation in Santa Claus. Um, so, you know, personally, I try and do a lot of, um, business opportunities and networking for our black businesses in our community. And what we have to understand as far as social justice and equity is concerned and leveling the playing field and presenting these opportunities and making sure we're intentional and deliberate about selecting responsible citizens, um, to engage in this. Um, I can attest that Ms. Young is exceptionally responsible. Um, very concerned about the community and will continue, um, to not only educate the community on the. and will continue to not only educate the community on the appropriate uses of cannabis, but will also continue to contribute and give back. We are personally working right now on our Juneteenth event for the community. She is spearheading that. We are working to bring a fireworks experience for Juneteenth celebration. Again, just an all-out person who has come into this community, who lives here, is raising her family here, has already invested in West Orange, and will continue to invest in West Orange. So I'm very proud to support her application. She is, her business plan is stellar. She has done her homework, and she will continue to advocate for social justice and equity in a capacity that we need it to be done here in West Orange. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castelina?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Talia and Brett, it was real privilege to speak with you both at the last meeting. You know, it's comfort knowing that you're so knowledgeable within this industry, and appreciate you wanting to invest in your community and to be, to the due diligence that you've done. The one thing I just want to talk about, and Brett, you touched upon this, and I appreciate, because every time I talk to a new applicant, myself, I always say in full disclosure, it's hard for me to get here with these, with this initiative, because I wasn't originally supportive of it, is the learning experience and learning, you know, more and more about these, these retail spaces. So with that in mind, I like the fact that you said that you were going to, you know, take your time with the clients. When they come in, educate them, bring them into the retail space. But you, just to go back on a security issue, I just need a little bit more comfort, is I know you're only allowing four at a time within the, within the retail space, I believe was the number, if I recall correctly. So I know last week, and you made me feel very comfortable, so that's not the issue. It was when I heard what happened in Maplewood last week, and, you know, they opened up and they were inundated. I just want to just hear your plan for something of that nature was, was to happen. How would you handle that situation?
Yeah, um, so it's funny, I've, obviously, I grew up going with stars K through 12 here, and I know a lot of people that were visiting dispensaries over the weekend in different areas. And I reached out to all of them and said, hey, well, how was your experience? Good, bad, the ugly, because we want to know. We want to make sure if we do this, we're doing this the right way. And I've heard, and I've heard mixed details. Some people said, hey, the lot, you know, the wait, the wait time was great. It was in and out, no more than 10 minutes, only a small amount of people in. It was very intimate, very secure, very safe. Other people said, you know, it was kind of crazy. So one of the things that we're going to do is just do our research and just make sure that everything is free-flowing, everything is safe, everything is not, is not highly chaotic. I think the one good thing is because the rollout has happened the way it is, by the time West Orange gets one, I think we'll be in a much better place, right? Even thinking about the pandemic, from, from the time it starts till now, we kind of got in a rhythm. We kind of understand how to do this without, you know, panicking and toppling over each other and having all-out war. So I think one of the good things about us getting it later is we get to learn from everybody else's mistakes. And we'll have a game plan to make sure that some of the things that are happening around New Jersey don't happen here, to make sure people are getting in safely, securely, without, without any issues. That was one of the main things I did over the weekend, and just ask people, how was your experience and what you could have, you know, what would you have liked to seen done better? So that's something that obviously, as we get further into this, we will make sure we do. But like I think, like we said last time, just keeping people in their cars, limiting the amount of people that are in the space in general at a certain time would be very helpful, having people outside, also, you know, mitigating traffic and stuff like that, just to make sure that everything is run smoothly and that we don't have a traffic jam, because lord knows, last thing West Orange needs is more traffic, so.
Great answer, Brett. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Council President?
Yeah, they're coming.
Thank you.
You know, I see on your cost and selling price of some of the products, we, we touched upon vaping also. I understand that this is adult use, but that it's still strictly adult use, right? Can you talk a little bit about vaping and, and how that would work here?
Well, we understand in general in the market, vaping, underage vaping is a huge health concern, and we're not looking to add on to that. First of all, there's a huge assortment of products that we're looking and more interested into that are actually serving the market and more beneficial from a revenue model and a sustainable model than just vaping. Vaping has the bad effect because it's easy and accessible to hide from a youth factor, and you can't ignore that. So we're not really looking to really expand on that. And it actually comes with more risk from the business owner, ourselves, with having our product that has to be marked and able to be tracked. So we don't want the actual liability of having that coming back to us. And also understanding that this is a community, in the community that our kids are in. I mean, literally, I'm holding a two-year-old baby right now underneath me, hoping that you do not see him pop up. So I'm not going to put a product in the street that really would, at the end of line, five, 10 years from now, be in his hands. I think we can sell and bring this business to market responsibly. And I do know the bigger benefit, even though vaping is a very hot topic right now. There's so many more benefits in the products that we're going to be serving on the continuing quality of life factors. Even tonight, I was having a bite to eat at Patty's down, excuse me, I think they changed your name in the restaurant recently, Mama Dogs, Mama Dogs. Yeah, and there's a couple, there was a man and a wife and their friends couple, and they were literally talking about edibles and how it was helping him get through his gout issues. So I think what we're really talking about is how do you expand the education on this product and how it really crosses the generations on improving health, more literally focused on the elder generations.
I appreciate the focus that you have on the health and wellness of this retail business. You know, I still have concerns. We do have laws about drinking, driving, whatnot. And I just, you know, when you talk about children and educational materials, I am wondering if it's something that you would seek to look at in the driver education courses, possibly at the high school, having those, I really don't know what they're called, but they're driving impaired goggles, so that if a student... Yep, so that if a student, you know, they understand what it would be like, what it would be like, period.
No, but and it's a full, I think it's a full scope, it's the full conversation, it's being integrated, integrated in the market and into the community. So there is a previous knowledge, you can't hide information from children, you just cannot. So I think being more proactive is their approach, having dialogue. And I believe, most importantly, we're open, I should say, to having more strategic partnerships that if it's suggested to us to be proactive and kind of have those previous conversations and ongoing programming, I don't think that's going to hurt us at all. So we are welcome and very open to any strategic partners or having those dialogues and conversations that may be a risk to any injury or just any negative implementation on the community.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and I think, you know, like Ms. Young said, one, vaping is, the pens and the oils is not even really our biggest products, that's a good thing. And two, the educational part, that's why that's so important, right? For the people that will be taking that, looking into that stuff, how do you educate them on doing it the right way? How do you educate them on what's safe, what's not safe, what's actually, because a lot of people don't know, especially on the East Coast. We're still kind of new to this. So how do you get people to understand, hold on? What, what do you actually want? Because sometimes you go in there thinking, oh, I want this. But then when you talk to somebody who's more educated, it's like, okay, maybe I shouldn't do this, I should do this, because that's actually what's going to give me what I actually need. So that's why it's so important for us to push that educational piece, because, I'll admit, I went to college, I was young, in my twenties, and I experimented with stuff, and I wish somebody would have told me what, what I was doing right and wrong, because I would have had a much better experience doing that. So it's something that I think, I take very personally, you know, because I have, I still have young friends and young kids and cousins that are in their early twenties, that are in their mid-twenties, that still know this stuff. Again, it's new over here. So I always want to be able to make sure people are safe, because I wouldn't want anything going on in my community that is unsafe. So I think that's a huge thing for us, is just making sure that people come in there and they're educated on what they're actually buying. Because, yeah, especially for a younger person in their early twenties, they might say, oh, yeah, vape pen is what I want. But really, that's not what you need, you need something else. So I think that's a big part of this as well, just making sure that people understand what they're buying, what it actually does for them. And so we can, you know, limit all the, all the possible, you know, just things that could happen. So that's, that's our biggest thing, just making sure this is a safe thing for the community and stuff like that.
But I would just add to that, there's two levels of product knowledge. Product knowledge on the consumers that will be investing in, also product knowledge on our retail and our staff. We look to have a diverse employee base. One, we're first sourcing from West Orange and the greater Essex County community. But there's a lot of educational strategies that we have to have for our staff, looking to have about five people on site, four to five people on site at one time. So their product knowledge and expanding the industry on the profession of the cannabis business is also important to us and our brand that we're building and developing through this process. So I think there's a twofold, there is a product knowledge on distribution and retail, and then there's their product knowledge on actual business base that we like to expand for our residents here in community, for employment opportunities as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Thank you, Council President. And let me lower my hand now before I forget, I think I'm getting the hang of the iPad. To your point with community partnerships and education and something, Councilwoman Williams, who is the liaison to the municipal alliance, as you know, you know, we, they receive grants from the county via the state for mental health awareness, drug prevention, community engagement. Essex County has a cannabis task force, and one of the participants, Joelle Torres, is a member of the task force, but also works with, the acronym is ADAPT, and they work directly with schools, communities, parents, and families. So during the lunch and learn, what you're going to hear for those that are participating, is his advocacy, his education with parents, schools, in that community collaboration. So Ms. Young, I would hope that if, you know, I know you're working, but if this is going to be recorded, if you're not able to participate, and Mr. Carroll as well, reach out to Joelle Torres, because that is a great partnership to help us make sure that we are educating not just our students, because to Mr. Carroll's point, adults don't really know. So I think that that is something that, and I'll forward you, or Councilwoman Williams, since she is the council liaison. You're muted, Councilwoman. Jump in here at this time, I need to...
No, I was saying, I just sent her the flyers for the actual workshop, and I'll make sure she gets his contact information.
Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Also, Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Thank you. And for the, and for the public, again, I'm sorry that I did not, I just didn't have access to my email being out of the country because our server didn't allow it for out of country. So I was not able to get a slide of the location and the proposed design, but it is on the Cannabis Task Force website on the link. So please go on there, read the evaluation report, and just get to know what that's going to look like. And we welcome any questions that you may have after this. Just email to contact us to the task force. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. Excellent application and presentation so far. Thank you both for, you know, being present and answering these questions tonight. I just have one question. Are you to the, what is the ownership relationship between Ms. Young and Mr. Carroll? Are you the only owners? How does that work?
So I own 51% of Chemistry, and Brett Carroll is an investor, and he comes as an investor to Chemistry on the ownership level. But I'm the majority owner of Chemistry.
Got it. And so it's 5149, you and Mr. Carroll?
And Carroll, Mr. Carroll has a partner as his investment group.
Got it. Thank you.
And then that's what we shared as our operation agreement, showing the separation with inside his investment group.
Right, so that Next Gen and the TKJ, that's on Mr. Carroll's side?
Correct.
Yes. No, that's strictly on my side.
Okay, thank you. Have my own question.
I mean, one of the, you know, if you're looking at, just, just for conversation base, because I don't want to open a door, right? But one of the biggest hurdles, you know, and not in just in New Jersey, across the country, for women and minorities to get into this business is capital. There's going to be, have to be a capital raise, there is a large investment. And most, you know, if you look at most retail businesses, which I've had in my past, you're looking at a $2,500,000 investment core just to get something up and running. This is a new industry, so we've had to take a large investment on lawyers, consultants, to understand the, the policy, the ever-changing policy, what's to predict in the future. Because once we go through this process, we also have to get state-approved, and that's a process. So looking at the policy side, which I'm very familiar with, we've had to look and invest in that. And I think that's the biggest hurdle. You're looking at trying to level the playing field in a product that has been targeted and demonized communities of color for years. And it's not just this product, there's multiple uses of substance abuse products that has hindered the, the development and economic impact of black communities specifically. So having an investor, I think it's extremely important, being lucky enough to find an investor that's local, but also leveraging our both capacity and relationship to eventually invest in this and become a stabilized company. I think when you talk about growth, I think we're first talking about sustainability, getting the doors open and getting it operated functionally to have a stable company is our first and foremost priority. But it is, you know, just that's the reality, that's the biggest hurdle when it comes to this industry.
Yeah, I totally get it and have seen it and do understand it, and applaud you for finding the right capital partner.
Thank you.
Are we ready to call for a vote?
Mr. Moon, anything else to add?
No, I mean, the members of the council don't have any other questions. I think we can proceed as the council sees fit.
I'd like a motion.
And really, what this is approving is our letter of support to move on to the state level.
So, so...
Can I take a small poll vote first? Councilwoman Castelina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
I am fully supportive of these individuals and their business, but I am going to abstain from the vote.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
Congratulations, Soror.
I'm about to say this is exciting. I wanted to be, you know. I wanted to be, you know.
So, I, so I just wanted to get the opportunity to remind the members, so basically this process wise. Um, you have now voted and adopted a resolution of local support, which is a requirement for chemistry to now. Um, submit as part of their application to the state, um as well as um now having the resolution adopted. Um, I'll, I'll be coordinating with the zoning department to get a letter of zoning compliance, just to confirm that. The proposed prop, the location of the proposed business um conforms to the township's ordinance. Uh, which, which, which my base of my does. Um, and so now they have the documents ready to proceed with their state application for the commission. Um, and then, once they get that, they'll come back to us for the final local license, um and good luck.
Mark, let me ask you that question though, so we're saying that we know that this is in the zone, though you will get this letter. Does it then in fact go to zoning board?
Um, so, so the way that our ordinance is set up, um cannabis businesses are conditional uses. Um, they're not, they're not permitted uses per se, so there is still the process where they have to get approval now. It's not the same as a use variance or a bulk variance, so they're not, they don't need to maintain a showing. All it really is just to confirm that they meet all of the conditions under um the the zoning ordinance. Which includes, you know, state license, um, you know, the security measures approved by the police department, all the things that are within our ordinance. Once they have all those conditions satisfied, the board will just basically confirm and check off that they meet the conditions and they will issue them an approval. Um, to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Matupra.
Thank, thank you, um, just for the benefit of the public and just to echo uh what Mr. Moon said. And to congratulate you both as well, um, we are constantly looking for young people to step up. To be the face of leadership, especially among black and brown communities, because we just don't see them in most of our institutions. So um I am congratulating you, but I also want to let the public know. That as you all know, you both know, the application for the state is quite extensive. Quite costly, and our resolution is a very small part, uh resolution of support. Is a very small part of that process. Um, but I do want to wish you well, and I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that you've got a long road ahead of you. Um, and we wish you well. Look forward to when you come back, um as we explained to you at the task force meeting. That there will be further detailed um processes for you to actually obtain a license from us. Um, and I share that, I'm not meant to say that you don't know that, because we spoke about this during our task force meeting. But for the public to understand, um, so thank you both and good luck.
Thank you, appreciate.
Thank you, thank you, we don't take this lightly.
Not at all.
Good, um, there's a couple more resolutions that were pulled, but if I could just skip to one twenty-seven twenty-two. That's the other resolution of support for a cannabis-related business, Peace of Mind Construction Group LLC.
Yes, um, Meg, if you can elevate um Denise and Paula Sepchenko. They are representatives from Peace of Mind Construction.
And Mark, give us the address on here too, please.
Uh, this is, this is the, so this proper, this proposed business is going to be located at seventy-six Ashland Avenue. Um, this one's a little bit different, this is the first of, um, this is the, they are proposing a cultivation and manufacturing business. Um, which is different than the other applications we've seen thus far, which have been um all retail.
Mark, what was the other name?
Uh. Paula. Sepchenko.
I see. Denise is on, we need Paula. I saw her name before, she may be in the audience.
I I got them both.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, I see that um Paula's on, um, I, you know, the, uh, Denise, if you could join us as well. I did. Again, I wanted to give the opportunity to introduce yourselves and members of the task council. And maybe discuss a little bit about what your goals are with Peace of Mind Construction.
Denise got a mute, there you go.
Hi, everyone, good evening, uh, my name is Denise Lewin, I am uh an owner for Peace of Mind Construction Group. And um I'm here with my partner Paula, and yeah, Paula, you can go next.
Hi, guys, um, thank you for having us tonight, and we really appreciate your support here and your time and consideration. Uh, my name's Paula Sepchenko, I am part owner of Peace of Mind Construction Group. I have partnered with Denise to help with the um regulatory, legal. And can, bringing cannabis expertise to this company. And uh my background is that I'm an attorney and consultant, I work in the cannabis industry. And I assist groups with licensing in the cannabis industry on a multi-state level. So um Peace of Mind Construction Group is looking to have a cultivation and manufacturing license. We, our plan is to start as a micro license and then to request approval to expand after one year of operations. And that's why we picked a building that is um a little bit larger than what we. Are going to need for the initial year of operations.
So, thank you, thank you for the intro, can you tell me in the build, building on Ashland Avenue, um, is it an industrial zone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council President, if I may interject.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, good to see you ladies again, thank you so much for taking the time out. Um, and all of your extensive work, and um for the public, a little bit of background. This um application I'm also very proud of, um, their efforts. Uh, the state uh scrutinizes applications, as as both these ladies can tell you. Um, quite extensively, including personal taxes, uh, there's uh, there's very little that the state does not ask for. Um, and they applied on a conditional license for a conditional micro business license, which means that they. Are conditional, and they were granted that license, so first and foremost, kudos to you. Um, my, my.
Thank you.
My goal in bringing the social justice equity was to piece to the focus of the cannabis task force. Was to ensure that the state could not say that they did not have qualified minority-owned. Business applicants, so we focus on qualified minority-owned business licenses. Uh, minority including women, women of color, vets. Um, the community members from impacted and marginalized communities. Um, as a result of the failed war on drugs. Um, so to, to be able to bring to my council colleagues, um, after much work. Um, the, we, we scrutinize this application probably even more so than than the other. Because um, because you did receive the um approval from the state. So I want to say that um West Orange is leading. Um, in best practices with our task force and our focus. We have a first minority-owned and women-owned um micro business. Um, for cultivation, and I am so very excited because this supports the legislation. Of this, the uh cannabis legislation for the state, but also um has the potential. To create incredible revenue streams for West Orange as well. Um, and so uh if you can talk a little bit about um having now. Received. Your um approval from the state, what the next uh steps are for you. Um, obviously, you're here for a resolution of support, and Denise, as you know, um. I don't usually speak this way, but I have COVID and am quarantined, so I'm pacing myself, so. Um, I, I appreciate everyone's patience, so can you share with my council colleagues the next steps required from the state? Um, including the resol, well, you don't, yes, including the resolution of support.
Yes, so um I'll cover the regulatory side since that's more on me, and then Denise, you can talk about. Um, you know, the next steps from your end, so. Um, on the state level, once you apply for conditional and receive conditional approval, you have a hundred twenty days. Plus sixty days to request for the conversion to the annual license. So we're currently in the process of working on those um conversion documents. And it's basically what we included in the business and regulatory compliance plan, but every section more in depth. Like, for example, the security section, I believe is ten pages, um, tho- those types of things, cultivation is is ten pages. Um, so everything more in depth, so I'm working on that now. Um, and then, once we submit that. Um, the CRC has said that they are, and and just so anybody that doesn't know what CRC is. I know, I know the town council knows, but it's the New Jersey um Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And um they have said that they will um respond in either approve or deny. The conversion packet within three months after submission. Um, and then from there, we have eighteen months to build out and have a facility that's operational. Um, so we do have significant ti- uh, a good amount of time to get operational. However, we would like to be operational within the next six months to a year. Um, obviously, we understand, and Denise can talk about this more than I can, but we understand that. Everything is backlog right now from a perspective of um construction. So um that's going to make it a little bit difficult, but we are forecasting that within the year, within the next year, we will be operational.
Yes, the build-out part will be more on uh my end, on the construction side, uh, because that's. Um, more my expertise, the development and construction, and so we are working on um drawings and plans. Next to be able to submit to the township um from our architect that will hopefully get approval. And we can move on from there. That's what's next up on my plane, on our end.
So, um, Council President, if you want to open the floor to the members of the council, if they had any specific questions or inquiries that they wanted to make of the applicants.
Uh, I actually do have a question, because I I know Ashland Avenue, and um I do know the site that you are. Um, looking uh to operate, and I know that there have been complaints. About commercial vehicles and parking and obstructing traffic, and it is a narrow street. And I would like to understand better your operation and. And the use of any commercial vehicles, if any, and how that would impact Ashland Avenue.
Yeah, sure, so um, commercial vehicles that would be coming, obviously, it would be initially. More um, more, more vehicles coming more often on the build-out phase. And then from there, um, it wouldn't be so often, we basically would have. Um, cash pickup and drop-off if needed, which most likely won't be an issue. Because um since we're cultivation manufacturing, we don't, we don't have that problem. Um, so that won't be very often, then um we would have deliveries and pickups for products. And then everything outside, I would say that would probably be once a week. And then everything else from there would just be like standard, um, standard that every business has. Like, for example, when we're ordering our packaging, that would come in through the mail, just like any other business, um, through the mailman. And I don't think that would be very disruptive, so um that should answer your questions. And also, we are currently working on a plan to be able to access the back of the building, the side or the back of the building. Um, so that we do not have to go through the street where the school is. Because I understand that that's a bigger concern, is is that side.
On Ashland Avenue, right, Ashland Avenue would be the playground and the, um, right.
There's not a school, there's no school.
Right, it's a playground.
Oh, sorry.
No, it it's, my understanding is there's a board of education building, it's for, it's it's a basically where they park school buses.
Oh, that's across the street, yeah, that's not near her.
So I know when we had the prior call, that was someone, that was one of your guys' concerns, and and we told you guys that we'll, we'll look into it. So we're working on it right now with the owner.
So when you talk about commercial vehicles, are you talking about trucks or vans, or can you just talk about the size of?
Yeah, we're going to be using more the cargo vans, not like any large uh commercial vehicles. Like Mack trucks or anything.
And are you taking over the whole operation, or is it still a multi-use back there? Will other uh businesses be there, because I understand there's trucks already parked there, or are they not supposed to be there? Do you know?
Um, I can't speak for what's supposed to be happening at that property or not, um, but we are taking over that full building.
Okay, that's what I need, that's what I wanted to know. So then, and then you would, you really are improving the site from the pictures, it looks like it'll be a major improvement. Uh, of the site and the cleanup of the area.
Yes.
Okay, and I I know that there are so many, um, you know, regulations that you have to go through locally and on the state level. And can you talk about security systems, are they inside and outside of the building?
Yeah.
So, I would, I was just going to ask that, keep it a little more generalized, obviously, we don't want to get specifics of the security measures of of a local business.
I meant, you know, of course, there's video surveillance, and that's all part of the regulations, but are they inside as well as outside?
Yes, we will have, um, most of these facilities have between like, I would say like. Anywhere between ten to twenty cameras.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because you, in unless you buy more expensive cameras that are like full range, right, then you would have less cameras. Um, to be able to see every point of of an entry and and in grass and eat grass. Um, and all the access areas for cannabis, so like on the vault, where the cannabis is growing. Where the cannabis is being extracted, um, we have um cameras directly on the weighing scales. Um, directly on um the clocking of the. Um, the tags for the, the tracking system. Um, all, everything is tracked, um, so we can basically connect what's going on on the cameras. Through the tracking system at any given time.
Oh, thank you, thank you for that information.
Sure.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Hey, thank you, Council President, I I just want to bring up a few points, uh, and uh, just for the sake of my colleagues and the public. So, first one is, um, maybe Ven- Denise could speak to this, um, being a member of the community. Um, I I know she, um, we, concerns was because there's a residential apartment building. Across the street, um, we talked a lot about in our interview, we talked for a while in regards to uh the product. Uh, smelling, uh, the appearance of the property, the traffic and and and, you know, what made me feel comfortable. Was, you know, her caring about her community and uh and the ability for them to. Uh, make the site look, appear a lot nicer than what it looks like right now. And uh if she wants to speak, I don't want to speak for her, if you wanted to share some of the things you shared with me last week.
Yes, so, yes, so um I remember that well, because I remember we bonded over being moms. And I'm a new mom, so I know there is a a school very close by, and the safety of everyone there is very important to me. So, um, and again, I'm more sensitive to the, sensitive to this being a new mom, sorry, I have new braces in right now.
It's actually, Denise, it's a bus, it's a school bus stop, there's not a school nearby.
This is bus stop, yes, yes, yes.
Right.
Yeah, so it's this, the um. Yeah, so it's this, the um, students very close by and will be
Yeah.
be um, in traffic in that area, and so the safety of that area was very important to me personally. And um, I'm not sure if you remember our um, guest that was on last time as well. Um, Anthony, he spoke a lot to the security measures we will be taking, and um, he would be the perfect person to go into detail with that, because that's why we brought him in, that's his expertise. Um, but that was my thinking with that, with bringing him on, with that expertise and and background that he has in security. We needed that for that purpose, to make the community feel safe, that, make sure the children are safe. And um, again, one of my, the things that are important to me was to educate the community about cannabis and, you know, mitigate any mixed ideas and things that may be out there about it to uh, clear up any concerns or worries for everyone to feel more at ease and comfortable.
And and Paula, maybe you could talk about the, the system for the, you know, the, the smell, that it's, there shouldn't be any uh, for, for the neighborhood.
Yes, sure. Um, so I s- I think I sent over some information on the, the carbon scrubbing specifically, but in the, in the different brands. So basically, um, obviously cannabis does have a scent. Um, typically, this is contained inside of the facility. Um, the only time that it it would be an issue and not contained is if you don't have the proper carbon scrubbing um, filters um, i- in, in the facility. And so we will have those filters in the facility, it's typically connected to the ceiling um, and to the system that controls the airflow. Um, and then there's a couple of things that you can do in addition, um, like i- i- in, insert additional um, carbon scrubbers in, in the um, HVAC system, that kind of stuff as you go. Um, control the filtered air in and out, which is a requirement pretty much to be able to ca- cultivate cannabis because you wanna be able to control the air that's coming in um, at the same time. So, yes, basically, we will have that, um, and it will assist with odor control.
Now, my other question, is it possible for you to get, cause for me, you know, you have an access to that other driveway that's off of Park Avenue to keep the traffic off of Ashland. Um, are are you able to get some kind of um, uh, u- use, usage contract with, with that property owner? That's gonna give you permission to utilize that driveway? I I'd, I'd feel a little bit, you know, feel better if you had that. I just, I know that's was part of my, you know, decision to move you forward was knowing that you would be utilizing that uh, driveway and keeping, you know, these, some of these deliveries uh, with the product off of Ashland Avenue. So I just would like for you to see if you could get a usage agreement, number one. And then number two, um, you know, I was very comfortable with, with, with your group. Um, my discomfort has been that you're uh, subleasing from a, um, from someone else. And so I wanted to see that agreement, so I appreciate you going, you know, through the efforts and Mr. Moon supplying that information. I I'm still having issues with um, item number seven on the, on the, the lease. I, and I've had a conver- I just wanna bring this up to my colleagues, cause there's a situation, not so much wi- with who they're leasing from. That was, was, was one of my concerns. And Mr. Moon, I, you know, threw you a few questions today. Um, so he asked you just to review that lease, you know, again, just to make sure that there aren't any issues um, with the way the lease reads, um, not your lease, but the one that you're subcontracting, but the, the one to the person leasing to you. And that's, I saw some items in there that if one of the property owners passes, I I have a few title issues that may be a concern for you down the road.
Okay, um, yes, to answer your first question, yes, we can request that. Um, the owner is working on looking into that for us. I believe that there's something there, but he would have to move. Um, so that was the only issue, um, but he's, he was fine with it, with our initial conversation. So um, I will follow up with him on that, but I don't think it will be an issue. And then to answer, or I don't know if I can answer your second question, I don't have the lease in front of me right now. Um, I could pull it up if you give me a second, but um, basically, the ju- just to kind of let you know, and maybe Mark told Mr. Moon
Right.
gave you the info, but just to kind of give you a summary, um, Rolando has a long-term lease on that property. And the reason that he set it up as a long-term lease was because the original owner has some tax liabilities that he did not um, want to work through and, or pass on to Rolando. And so that is why it was structured in that way. Um, just so you know.
Yeah, I don't know what we should, yeah, yeah, this shouldn't, this isn't that conversation. I just need to know that Mr. Moon is solid and
Yeah.
and, and that's, yeah, so we can't go there. Uh, we're not in a more private setting, but I I need Mr. Moon to be more solid.
Let me, let me, let me frame it this way. Um, last Friday, I had a call with um, the council, the council for the um, current tenant that was going to be subleasing to the applicant. Um, there was an explanation as to a little bit of the background. Um, he did provide us copies of different leasing agreements and operating agreements and whatnot. Um, and 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 I guess to the applicants, I will, oh, so basically, the ex, I guess, and again, council, council and Casalino, um, I don't, I don't mean to speak for you, but um, there has been expressed a concern, not real, not with the applicant itself, but the, it's the idea of because you're coming in as a sub-tenant to a tenant, um, there's a concern that if any of the ownership or whatever have any issues or you know, claims a, a breach to the lease agreement or anything like that, um, I guess, is there sort of a contingency plan as far as, okay, if this property, something, what not beyond your control with the, the, the original owners and the tenants? Is there any sort of um, contingency as far as like, okay, what happens if the title, if if title issues or possession of this property becomes an issue? Like, is there sort of a flexibility as far as, while, you know, the property that we're looking at i- is very suitable? Um, especially with the proposed expansion. You know, we'll talk a little bit about through the process of like, what would happen if hypothetically, the landlord would declare default and basically try to move you guys? I mean, is that something that
Yeah.
both regulatorily, regulatory would, would have to go through the state as well as, could you just viably do something like that, as a pickup and move an operation like this?
Yes, um, I understand your guys' concern. So I just wanna let you guys know that on the state side, we have to have a letter acknowledging from both the owner and the um, landlord that, the, the lessee, um, stating that they acknowledge that we will operate a cannabis business here, and they approve this use. Um, so this would not, the, we would not be in breach for this particular reason, it may be for something else. So let me go down this avenue, um, if it, if something like that does happen. Um, one is we ha- we have looked at other properties within West Orange, obviously, um, before we selected this one. Um, we like this one the most, but there are a couple others that, that we do like. Um, I think that, you know, you know, obviously, we would have to go through the approval process if we decide to move at any point. Um, we would have to go through the approval process with the state, which basically requires filing a variance um, to cultivate in a di- and manufacture in a different area. Um, also, we would have to obviously go through that same process with you guys. Um, this may, may or may not happen, depending on how much we want to expand. Um, and we have considered that, and we are taking that into consideration as we're, we're planning our build-out of this specific operation. Um, first of all, we are buying equipment that will allow us to scale. Um, cause for example, there's like one um, um, extraction machine that will only do X amount of volume, and another one that will allow a higher volume. So we're, we're buying the equipment that will allow the higher volume. Um, and also, obviously, it's not ideal to relocate. Um, this type of facility extraction is not as big of a deal as cultivation to relocate. Um, but it is feasible, it has been done um, multiple times, I I've seen it done. It's just, you have to go through the regulatory approval process, which, from my experience, that getting that regulatory approval can take anywhere between thirty days to three months.
Council President, if I can follow up?
Councilwoman Toobra.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I should've shut off my camera before I did that. Um, and and I had the opportunity, again, being quarantined to read, and this is, if people are wondering why I'm looking this way, it's because this is how I've been reading all of my documents for this council meeting. It's been challenging, but I had time to do it on my cellphone. Um, one of the reasons that I asked Jonathan Redwine um, to be on the task force, two reasons, he's an attorney. And he has children in every level, school district, so his um, input, insight and perspective um, for me uh, were valuable. And in, in reading the lease and in um, reading his analysis, the, the leasee, um, Rolando, um, his long-term lease is through twenty thirty-eight. Um, and there are different scenarios, obviously, under which there can um, arise um, issues. Um, not just the passing of the um, uh, you know, ownership, if you will, and I don't mean passing as in death, I mean passing as in a different owner. Um, at that point, um, well, that's one option, one scenario. The other scenario is if there is a violation of a lease. And we would have the same consideration for any other applicant that comes to us under these circumstances. The reality is that there are legal recourse, and that issue is between the the tenant and the landlord. Um, I felt more comfortable when I read the, through the lease that they do have that control through the, between the actual owner and the less, the lesee um, through twenty thirty-eight, but I'm not as concerned that there will be transfer of ownership. Um, because there could be a lease violation as well. I mean, it's just so many different scenarios, but that's what um, you know, the courts are for. And that is, you know, obviously, we want successful businesses. We know your investment is extensive. Um, and I was that much more comfortable when you came to us with an approved state license. So I just wanted to share that perspective, um, you know, it could be that scenario with the owner and the lesser or any um, applicant that comes to us with site control. Because there's remedies, right? They can violate um, an agreement, and then they can be, you know, processed to evict, can happen under any circumstance. So I, I was comfortable in reading um, through that lease and understanding that um, that, that they have been, first, first and foremost, the tenant, the owner, and the l- the lesser Rolando entered um, um, into this agreement several years ago. It wasn't just, you know, this year, last year, it's been a number of years. Um, and I'm, I'm quite comfortable with the, the, the clause that gives him control for twenty thirty till tw- twenty thirty-eight. And he has the, the authority within that lease to sublease. Um, and the state, as you stated, Paula, has asked for those documentations, and they were provided, and the state was satisfied with them. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the issue. Um, I know uh, Councilwoman Casalino, when we were initially discussing, I, I felt like I was trying to like, catch up with like, who owns what, where? Um, and the documents are extensive, I think they were two hundred and sixty-four pages, uh, but I certainly, after reading those agreements, and I really appreciate Councilwoman Casalino's insistence on seeing those documents, because I, it just, it settled me a lot more. Um, so just wanted to share that perspective with my council colleagues, if they have not had the opportunity um, to read those documents. Um, I, I was more comforted at that point. Thank you, Council President.
Any other questions? I had one question when we were talking about the ingress and egress, or having an agreement with um, I guess, the adjacent property owner on Park Avenue. Is that, was that a condition that the task force has? Or is that just wishful thinking on the part of the operator?
Well, I, I was asking for that to be a condition, whether we feel that way or not at this level. Um, I just think it would just take the traffic away from Ashland Avenue. We also too, and and the, they are willing to comply, and I wa- I neglected to mention this with as far as delivery times, cause, you know, I was concerned, because there is a school bus stop across the street in the morning and in the afternoon. And uh, to be mindful of the deliveries, so they wouldn't interfere or be, you know, having deliveries or security pickups or whatever. Um, obviously, you can't control when something's, you know, coming uh, by uh, by the post office or other vendors, but certain vendors, you can, you know, control some delivery times. So they were gonna be compliant with that, so I appreciated uh, that uh, from them. Cause I know that will be concern, like, let's not kid ourselves, you got a residential apartment building across the street um, with a lot of families in it and a park. So um, you know, if this was retail, this would've been a big fat no for me. But because it is a cultivator that kinda keeps to themselves, there's not uh, people, you know, going in and out. Uh, they have, they're gonna be purchasing the equipment, the high standard co- equipment um, for the smell. Um, so I had, where I was very uncomfortable with this at first, other than, you know, other now than with that, that lease, and as long as they're fully aware and they know that they may have a issue with that down the road. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with them, they really impressed me. And yours, uh, uh, was it Anthony, your security uh, team? He was, he was awesome. Uh, I wish he could've been here tonight, he made me feel very comfortable. And security is a lot with these facilities, especially, um, even though this is industrial. And and that's what's tough in our deso- in, our industrial zones in the township is they meet right up against uh, residential components. And um, same thing with our business districts. So whenever, you know, we're happy to have an investor, because, you know, some may say, well, what do you need cultivation for? I I mean, this is big-time revenue uh, for, for the township. Um, you know, it, it, this brings in more revenue than the retail. So um, you know, it's encouraging for us to, to look at this, cause again, that's one of the, the reasons why I uh, look towards this. And um, but I, you know, with all the issues aside, um, you ladies have done a wonderful job presenting yourselves and um, supplying of, with the information. And uh, again, congratulations on receiving the license. It's a well-deserved, and I, I know you'll be great neighbors for the neighborhood. Um, the, like I said, the bright side of this too, I, I mean, they're, you know, they'll renovate and um, make it uh, appealing, uh, you know, space for uh, for their neighbors. So uh, I will be supporting this this evening. Thank you. Thank you for coming on and spending so much time, even last week too, cause it is important, it's hard to feel comfortable with this, especially for me. Because it is important. It's hard to feel comfortable with this, especially for me. It, it's been tough, but thank you.
Thank you.
Castellino, thank you for your remarks, because I was concerned, as you said, we've always had issues when retail and in this case industrial are adjacent to residential zones. You know, we want to take all of our residents into consideration too, which is why I started my questioning about the size of the trucks and the amount of traffic. And looking through the evaluation, the picture of what is to be proposed, I think it looks really nice, uh, nice improvements there. So we thank you for that. And Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted, um, because it was something that, um, I heard the chief, who's also a part of our task force, participate in those conversations with respect to the traffic and, um, chief, are you, chief, is the chief on tonight? Chief, can you, can you join, can you come on? Maybe he stepped away. He mentioned during these discussions that, um, that, that was a roofing place and it had, um, daily commercial traffic, um, which is far more significant than a cultivator manufacturer will have. Because flower takes quite some time, cannabis flower takes quite some time to grow. You know, so I don't, I, I'm not going to say it's seasonal, but it's not the traffic that you had in that area when the roofing company was operating. So the chief, um, also his comments to that and, and chief also mentioned just the disarray and, um, complaints that he received from residents in that area because of the, the traffic and just the noise that came from being a, a lumber place. So I did appreciate his insertion of that in the discussion, because it helped me better understand what that was going to look like. So, uh, just wanted to share that with my colleagues and I'm sure the chief probably stepped away for a moment, but I'm, if I've misspoken, uh, my task force members here can, or Mark Moon I saw, you agree.
This, the, there have been complaints regarding the property and regarding the, the large more trucks and everything that are parking in the area and idling and things like that. So, you know, I, I, I agree, it, it, you know, this is an improvement on, on, on the type of use that we're going to see at the property as well.
I would just like to add with, to what, um, Councilwoman Matute Brown said. Just to add some additional, um, information. With indoor cultivation, you typically are having a turnaround of every eight weeks. Sometimes it can be three months. So it, it like about that timeframe. So that, uh, thank you for pointing that out and that should, um, help you guys to understand that we won't be having you know, the delivery trucks, the transportation trucks there that often, just because of the timing and the volume.
Are we ready to take a vote?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies. Good luck looking for next steps.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you so much, guys. We really appreciate everything you've done. A resolution one twenty-four dash twenty-two, resolution authorizing the sale and purchase agreement between the township West Orange and West Orange Senior Housing LLC for the library property at forty-six Mount Pleasant Avenue, West Orange. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Thank you, madam. Madam Clerk, I'm so sorry. Uh, is Mr. Trank on? Can he come on? Mr. Trank?
I'll text him. I think he stepped aside.
Thank you.
Why don't we move to the other one before it gets here?
One twenty-six?
One twenty-six, resolution awarding a contract to Carrier Corporation through use of the Sourcewell National Cooperative. National Cooperative, Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, and thank you, Mr. Gross, for turning your camera on because that was going to be the person who I would address my question to. As, as you know, this is the fourth, fourth or so time that we discuss the proposals that are grant, that are provided by Fairview. And this time we didn't have a comparison, comparative analysis of what they, um, they looked at to recommend, um, the same, the extension to the vision, the current vision carrier. Unless I missed the, and I could have, because again, this is all I had to read.
Cat, Councilwoman, I wanted that, that, this particular carrier is Carrier Air Conditioning. This is not an insurance carrier.
Okay, see, this is why I, I shouldn't be doing this on my cellphone. I apologize. Then I pulled the wrong one. I, okay.
That's, I, I think that's the resolution that we're talking about. I'm, if I'm wrong, I apologize. I mean, I'm, I'm just pulling up now just to make sure that I have the right information, but I'm, I don't, I'm not aware of anything on here tonight about.
Yeah, that's a H, HVAC.
Was there, was there?
There, there is one about, uh, Vision.
Yeah, the Vision.
Yeah, but that's not one twenty-six.
That's, um, one twenty, that's one oh three twenty-two. Yes, that already.
All right, we didn't, I pulled the wrong one to the public. I apologize. I did.
Just, just on FYI, that vision is, it's, it's a policy that we've had for, I don't know, certainly for ten years, maybe, maybe twenty years. It's no increase in it. It's, um, it's a minor contract for us, not, you know, not, not a lot of people avail themselves of it.
I, yeah, and, and as I was reading through it, I did see that there was no increase for that one. But I always like to see them come, give us the, and, and typically you do get that to us, the comparison.
And, and we don't pay this. The employee pays it to payroll deduction, so we don't have a cost.
Yeah, and, and I have to say, just for the public and, and I don't know if my council colleagues, I have not received any, any concerns from our, our municipal employees in that regard either. So I guess we can move that one for a vote.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mo- motion?
We already did one oh three.
No, one twenty-six twenty-two.
One twenty-six. Because we didn't need to pull this, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes, and just to clarify that this is really, uh, upgrading the, and improving the HVAC system at the country club.
Right.
I did, I did have questions about this as well, but not to pull it, but just to talk about, uh, the upgrades of the energy efficiency of this new equipment. So those questions will all be answered.
Okay. Resolution one twenty-four twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the sale and purchase agreement between the township of West Orange and the West Orange Senior Housing LLC for the library property at forty-six Mount Pleasant Avenue. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Trank, thank you for joining us, Mr. Cazier, thank you. You and I had an offline conversation about this with the many questions that I'm sure you received from my council colleagues. I pulled this not to vote against it, um, but just to express my perspective on, on, on the purchase and sale agreement, um, of the library. Considering the fact that we understand that we have a settlement agreement for affordable housing. Considering the fact that senior citizens cannot find a place to continue to live that's affordable for them. I, to me, this is something that, um, I think that we should really focus on. I know there was a comment made earlier about bad reviews. I don't know who made the comment about bad reviews about the Albert Group. The Albert Group has been incredibly supportive to the township, having held on to the Biddleman property and, um, helping to ensure the cleanup of the Browns Fields for I was surprised when I learned this for well over fifteen years and maybe even twenty. And then they went on to build what we now have affordable housing that are really luxurious, luxurious apartments for affordable housing, which were rented to capacity before opening. And they are now slated to build a one hundred percent market rate on Central Avenue as well, next to the existing property that they built. And the Tompkins Street, um, seventeen units, one hundred percent affordable housing. They have been a good community partner, in my opinion, because they are helping us meet a need in providing affordable housing and providing senior citizens with, um, affordable housing. If I recall, it's sixty-four percent affordable housing. Um, but that's what I wanted you to clarify, Mr. Trank, if you will. In that, and from that perspective of the, uh, percentage of affordable housing that this would bring to our seniors.
And on top of that, additional parking spaces for the public, two twenty-two additional parking spaces. Sorry, Mr. Trunk.
No, no problem. Um, again, uh, Councilwoman Matute Brown, you're, you're absolutely correct as to the history background and the, uh, way this all, uh, fits together, especially with the perspective, new library at Ten Rooney. So again, we had, uh, several years of, um, back and forth negotiations to meet our, um, I can't remember, it was round two or round three, uh, regional affordable housing requirements. And, and this site, uh, was selected as one of those locations was approved uh, in the Superior Court litigation. And again, what this resolution and this agreement does is implement that and allow us, uh, to, to move forward with uh, the project at what then will be called the, I guess, old library site. Also, it permits a seventy-five-hundred square foot uh, space for per- perpetuity in the new building that we can use for whatever use the township needs, whether it be, uh, community space, whether it be senior space in complementing the rent house, whether it be a satellite library, whether it be for whatever particular need exists. It's obviously on the municipal complex, uh, in, in the area behind Ten Hall. So it's obviously in close proximity. So, um, so, so that's, and this will be again, fully sixty-five units of affordable housing, not just fifteen or twenty percent uh, as exist in other projects and is this pursuant to most settlements. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Trank. And the other thing, um, I forgot to mention that just came to mind when Council President said the twenty additional parking spaces is that, um, we talk about equity. And when we look at the valley, it's for a very long time been in need of great attention from our community, from our administration. We are already seeing the interest to improve, um, that area of the valley. And I say that with respect to Mr. Ken Albert's commitment to the township, because he has worked very diligently with the township, with the state, continues to work with New Jersey Transit, trying to ensure that there is a midtown direct line from the train station that is three blocks from these properties in, uh, the valley that he has helped develop. And lastly, just to that point, because I know, um, you know, th- there are those who think we should have more than one competitive bidder, but it's, the devil is in the detail of who you know and that you don't know. We, as a public knows, and my council colleagues are well aware of, um, just got through a litigation process with, um, Prism, and he was put out to bid. And, uh, that project, I'm sorry, that he, that project was put out to bid. And I remember when I moved here over twenty years ago, it was, you know, a building that nobody wanted to invest in. In comes someone from a bid, um, who was willing to, um, I'm going to say, use others, others, other people's money to rehabilitate that. Um, and long story short, we don't have a downtown that we would like to visit. And that was the result of a bid, um, seeking a redeveloper. Here, we have the Albert Group who had demonstrated much success in their commitment to the township and our community. So I didn't pull it to vote against it. I just wanted to share my perspective with the public as to why I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, tha- thank you, Council Pres- I was, uh, Councilwoman Matute Brown, glad you said that, because my first question to you was, why, why'd you pull? Because you're supporting it, so, um, but I, I, I'm glad, uh, you, you mentioned a lot about Mr. Albert. And going back to this public comment part that I would have said earlier, um, about Mr. Albert, because that was one of the one of the, um, comments this evening and a disappointing one, um, because I don't know where the speaker, uh, received facts from, but Mr. Albert hat, does have a great reputation. He's been a great partner. Um, and this is going back longer than any of us were here. Well, actually, Councilwoman McCartney had, had worked with, with, uh, Mr. Albert and, uh, Rose DeSenna with the Hands Group and starting all, all of the groundwork, legwork for the valley to, for it to be what, what it is today. And, uh, I know Ro- Rose is, is, is very excited about that work too. So this started a long time ago. Uh, it's been a long time coming and for him to, um, get awarded as the, um, redeveloper for, uh, this site, which is a, a great location for senior housing right next to the rent a house. When, way back when, um, a couple of years back, when we were first presented with this opportunity, when I first came on council. One of the, um, you know, one of the plans is to make that more of a walkability area, because you do have, you know, two senior houses uh, next to each other. So, um, that seventy-five-hundred, uh, square feet of community space, whether it's a library annex or a meeting space or community space for the residents right there is, um, is, is, is really a great bonus and a plus. And, uh, I know Mr. Albert, um, will increase the walkability for a resident so they could enjoy our, our downtown, especially that area, because I always had to disagree, um, a little bit when we talk about our downtown. Um, it is desirable to a lot of people and they do frequent our downtown in areas and the St. Mark area is a very, very popular spot, uh, especially on the downtown Thursday nights. Uh, it was, it's a great popular spot. It was, it's a great popular spot. People are coming down to Benji's and Supreme Bakery and, and just some great long. Existing businesses for that community. So, anyway, with that being said, I will be supportive. And, you know, thank you, Mr. Trank, because you, you've worked hard on this and. And hopefully we'll get these projects off the ground very soon. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, Mr. Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. So I was going to pull this as well. I was not sure which way I would vote. I have a couple of issues. First, I do think Mr. Albert has been a good partner. I want to correct what I think. Was just misspeaking on the part of Councilwoman Matu Brown. The seventeen units on Tompkins Street, I believe. Yes, that is a one hundred percent affordable project. It is all affordable housing, but that is because there is an additional project. That has no affordable housing in it, and I think we're using the seventeen units. To offset the need for affordable housing in the other project that he's doing. And that's not a criticism. You know, my criticism would be that we don't require developers to do more than fifteen percent or twenty percent. Affordable units. I am for senior housing. I think it's, it's a good way to meet our affordable housing mandate. But I also am aware that seniors want to age in place. They don't, not all of them want to live in a senior building. And so while this may address an issue, it doesn't, it doesn't address the issues that our seniors are facing. And then the biggest thing for me is that we keep talking about this seventy-five-hundred square foot of space that's in the building. And we reference it as a satellite library. There is very little chance that that will be a library. We know that there's going to be no increase in the budget for the, for the libraries. They would need an increase in the budget to operate two spaces. I'm happy that Mr. Trank and I were able to have a very frank conversation about this last week. It is, it is, it is not likely to be a satellite library. So moving the library from that space to Essex Green or Executive Drive. Leaves the corridor that needs the library the most when it comes to having access to Wi-Fi and computers to apply for jobs. And for other issues, it leaves them without access to the facilities. That they rely on the most. And it's difficult for some folks to get up to Executive Drive, and I do believe it requires at least two bus. Routes to get there from the Main Street or South Valley Corridor in particular. So, you know. I am supportive of, of Mr. Albert. I believe he's done a great job with all the projects that I'm aware of so far. I do think senior housing is a way to meet our mandate. I think focusing on senior housing provides, you know, an opportunity for us. To get some budget relief when it comes to the additional police or fire. They just don't use those kinds of services the same way as other residents do. So I understand all of that, but there are still some issues there that make it difficult for me, and the, the library is one of them. The last one is something that was brought up in public comment tonight with regard to bidding it out. I think Councilwoman Matu Brown just spoke to this as well, saying you've got to go with who you know. There, there's a, there's a West Orange resident, African American, who has done one hundred percent affordable. Projects in Essex County, has not been tapped on the shoulder, not requested for, to, to bid. Not even notified. I mean, there's, there are other developers that can, and so if we put things out to bid. Instead of just going with what we know, maybe we'll get some different outcomes. You know, we started tonight off with a presentation by a young lady, graduating senior from Montclair State. I believe her name was Kimberly Hill. And she spoke to diversity in town. And what we know is that diversity is only half of the equation. It's also inclusion. And so, you know, not putting it out to bid, not making sure that we cast a very wide, broad net. I think does us a disservice, and for those reasons, I'm hesitant to, to support this. Resolution tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilman Rutherford. You mentioned the presentation of diverse, the presentation that was made by Kimberly during the conference agenda. It also includes a diverse socio-economic base. If we want to see a thriving community, we absolutely need to consider that a unit that Mr. Albert. And the Albert Group built that is a hundred percent affordable. Is providing affordable housing to our residents. He's also providing a one hundred percent market rate building. Exactly like the one that he is providing for the seventeen units on Tompkins Street. To your statement that I missed both, that there was somehow a, you know. A give of the Tompkins Streets affordable housing, so that he can build the one hundred percent market rate. Is, is not what happened in those conversations. And I think I'm okay to say Mr. Trank was a little frustrated with me during, or maybe even the entire administration. During those discussions, because I did insist that there be an increase in the rates. Of the pilot payments that he would have to pay. I think that there was a fair assessment in a request for qualifications, which is permissible by law. And like me, and I'm sure so many of us, I see it all over the social community pages. When they ask for recommendations, referrals of someone that they need to. Remodel their home or a good plumber, electrician. I, I see it in this regard, in this perspective, something very positive. Because he has demonstrated time and time again, not just here in West Orange, but he is very successful. In so many other places across the state. So I will tell you that I did not misspeak. I know exactly. What those conversations.
Mentioned the market rate house, so if it's, if you're going to mention the seventeen units.
Council President.
Thank you. Please continue.
You were not recognized. I did mention it's, perhaps you didn't hear.
It's a recorded session.
Again, Council President, you were not acknowledged, and there's a point of order on the floor. I am still speaking.
Please continue.
Thank you. It was mentioned. I mentioned it. I absolutely mentioned it and followed that by stating that he has also worked on the New Jersey Transit line. So that we can get a Midtown Direct. And the reason I said that is because there have to be X amount. Of petitioners. That will ride the Midtown Direct train before they give us one. And he's helping us ensure that. So when our residents say we don't have a Midtown Direct line. Here, they'll have an opportunity if they want to rent at a market rate. If we have enough of them to sign petitions in and around that area, the Valley area, the Gregory area. It's in walking distance to the train. It would certainly benefit everyone in the community. So no, I did not misspeak. I did state the full market apartment rates. Which is why I interjected myself in the negotiations, discussions. When I was not invited to them, to advocate for a larger percentage payment of the pilot program. I, that, that's.
Councilwoman Catalina.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to talking about the library itself, and just because I'm in the library of. Friends Group trustee, so I, we just had a meeting the other night, and I just wanted to let my colleagues know, and. I appreciate where Councilman Rutherford, you know, made a good point about like the satellite library. But it is the intention of the committee and the trustee group to have computer lab there. To have books there, to have resources there. So again, I, I hear, you know, Mr. QB did a study of who actually walks to that site right now. And it's very few people that walk there. So that's always been a misconception and, and something that. You know, that's always overblown, but, and, and not to say we, we're not mindful of those who do walk. Because, you know, we, we, the, the intent is to leave the resources there for, for the community. But the jitney will also be available, and that will be worked out. We don't have the details to get them up to Essex Green. Also, there was another comment during public session. My notes are a little muddled because we weren't able to respond before. But the, you know, with the walkability around Ten Executive Drive. That's, you know, that's going to be addressed as well. Part of the plan is up there is to put in a drop-off. Area for the jitney buses, and if any school buses go there. So, you know, again, when we first got ten, ten Rooney. A lot, you know, it would have been great if we, it could have been a different location that people could walk to, but again, you know, we were able to get the, the building. So I just want to add in those couple notes for folks listening, because I know that is a concern about, will something be there? And thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. So what Councilwoman Matu Brown was referencing, or at least what appeared, what it seemed like to me. Were the, I guess, the Harvard Press buildings on Central Avenue. Those are not where the seventeen units of affordable housing on Tompkins Street were created. So perhaps I misunderstood her. It sounded to me like she misspoke. Linking two separate projects, please let me finish, two separate projects that did not create those seventeen units. Now, what, none of what she said contradicted what I said. I, I'm not opposed to the seventeen affordable units. I don't think Mr. Albert's done a poor job. I think he's been a good, good partner. What, what I'm speaking to is the movement of the library. Our focus right now on all of this affordable housing, when we generally don't. Encourage or require developers that are getting any kind of a tax. Abatement or pilot or whatever from us to incorporate more than the minimum. Number of units in the, into their project. So it, it seems to me. Like these things are spoken about in order to make it more palatable, either to the council to vote on or to the community, community to accept. And I don't, I don't think that that's how we should do it. If, if, if we acknowledge that the library is a vital institution in town. And there has been pushback on the library moving, and the, the way that we address that is by saying we're going to have a library. In this building, and we know we're not, or at least it's very unlikely that we will. I, I think that's disingenuous to present it that way. And if it's not going to be there, whether the folks are taking the bus across Main Street, getting dropped off by a friend. Driving themselves or walking, or Uber, or whatever they're taking to the library. We know that that corridor, the Main Street corridor, the Valley Street corridor, South Valley corridor, has. The least affluent. Has, has a concentration of the least affluent residents in town, who are more likely than not. To not have Wi-Fi at home, or maybe not even have a computer at home. And so for those folks that do rely on that. It then becomes difficult for them to get access to the, to the services that they need. The next closest library, if you're on Main Street, you'll be stuck between the Orange Library on Main Street and Orange. Or West Orange Library and Executive Drive. Main Street, the Orange Library on Main Street has all kinds of issues. You know, as an elected official, I won't address them. It, they have their own issues, but you're, you're stuck with six on one hand, half a dozen on the other, if you need a service and you can't get to it. So that, to me, is a challenge, as well as not putting this kind of a project out to bid. There are other qualified developers that can do affordable housing. And again, this is not to disparage Mr. Albert at all. I don't know, I, I asked Mr. Albert if he'd be willing to participate with the. In helping to make a visual presentation of the Arts District using his buildings as campuses. He did not hesitate to say yes. That was a big deal. He didn't even have to think about it. He just said, yes, what do you need? He has been an excellent partner. So that is not my criticism or my concern. My concerns are limited to not putting it out to bid. And not being serious about a library presence on Main Street. Now, if, if we're, if we can have a conversation about. What we can do on Main Street with regard to a STEM Center. Or a, another, you know, high-tech facility that honors both our, our legacy as the home of innovation. But also prepares us for the future, provides an amenity for that corridor. I'm happy to have that conversation. But absent that, it's very difficult for me to vote for this, knowing that we're going to leave a large swath of our community. Without access to a library or easy access to the library. And, and last thing I will say. I understand Councilwoman Castellino's point about the jitney, and I certainly do hope that that comes to fruition. But there have been other developments in town where a jitney was promised and not delivered. And so if this is one of those where we promised the jitney for folks in that corridor to get up to Executive Drive and use the facility there. The library there, and then it doesn't materialize, we are further eroding the trust of those that have put us in this place. And we're leaving them further behind in a digital age. So, you know, those are my concerns. And, 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 and that's why I'm hesitant, and that's why I would have pulled it, and I think I've, I've spoken to that effectively enough. Thank you, Council President.
I'd like to call the vote.
I'm going to ask, Councilwoman Castellino has her hand up first, and then we can move to vote. Michelle, you're muted. You're muted. Sorry. I know.
I, I'm sorry. I, I don't want to get into debate with you, councilmen, because I really appreciate your passion for our residents. But, you know, the, 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 this library board has been working really hard, and, and their intent. Is to leave services in that building through that seventy-five-hundred square feet. Yes, it's not a, a, a big library annex building, but services are services. So people will be served, and, you know, I just want to get that point across to anybody who's listening, because. It, it, there, I don't want anybody feeling they're going to be left behind, because they will not be left behind. And so books, books, they will, even now, we get to our senior houses when they need books. There, there's a whole volunteer delivery service. Mr. QB has his staff. So there are so many resources that they have to extend to the community, to get those resources there. And I totally get your passion, but I don't want anybody listening to this call thinking that resources aren't going to be there for them either. And, and as far as going back, yes, I, I get the bidding and all that, but the tack, going back to Mr. Trank's points with the tax credits. I mean, that's, that was a long, intricate process that couldn't, can't be duplicated at this stage. So I, I appreciate your passion and everything, and I want to get into debate, but I just don't want folks to think. That there isn't going to be any services and they're going to be left behind because we're going to Ten Rooney Circle. And, and with that, I, I second your call to the vote. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, just one moment. I'm going to take a roll call vote since we had two motions. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
No.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President McCartney.
Yes.
Okay. Now we have ordinances, but we also have an executive session. I don't know if you wanted to go into executive session or through the ordinances first.
Well, we said we were going into executive session so that we can come back and vote on,
Right.
Yeah, the resolution.
So can we go, can we go and do we need a motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
I move that we go into executive session and come back and, uh, then finish the meeting agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Sorry. Are we good to go, Megan?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Who's addressing the resolution?
I assume Mark's going to do it because he prepared it, but.
Okay, we're ready.
Are we waiting for Michelle to come on?
Oh.
Let me make a motion.
Sorry, I, I was here. I just wasn't. My screen was looking at the resolution.
Should we make a motion to?
Well, I think Mark wants to explain.
Yeah, he should, he should explain this to the public.
Um, okay, so there's been.
To come out of executive session, that's what I was.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, we can do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So coming out of executive session, there was discussion regarding the substance of, um, Resolution 121 dash 22 in terms of the terms set forth in the agreement for the Chief Financial Officer. There has been proposed amendment to the agreement, which I will put up, place on the record and read as follows. Previous paragraph B has now been deleted with reference to the longevity pay and the monetary compensation. So now read as pensionable salary, pensionable base salary for the Chief Financial Officer shall be $265,412. In addition, the pensionable base salary for the Chief Financial Officer shall be subject to adjustment through the term of this agreement so that the pensionable base salary shall be 1% higher than the second highest pensionable base salary for any employee of the township. Paragraph that was previously paragraph C shall now be paragraph B in that section.
Council President, can I make a statement?
Please.
So just for those who are listening in and, uh, we just re, redid the math. You know, longevity has been, uh, something in the township that was taken out of employee contracts years ago. We had an issue about two years ago where some of our managers, we had to realign their, their pace, uh, their pay because for the positions that they have done didn't line up with other staff members because they had the boost of longevity. And just as a practice, um, you know, the, sorry for the delay and, and whatnot. We, we just, we made these revisions to the contract. Um, we're not going to be paying, uh, so, so just to get this straight, Mr. Gross, and the budget for the Business Administrator Line item, will anything be charged there?
No.
So nothing will be charged there. So Mr. Sear's salary comes out. And then this goes in the category of Chief Financial Officer.
Correct.
Okay. And then we're down a, a benefit too from his contract, uh, from Mr. Sear's contract as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Otherwise, we would have been hiring a, a full-time BA with full-time benefits. Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification for the public. And thank you.
Are we ready to move on this?
Y'all make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
I'm sorry, say that again?
No.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes, and Councilwoman Castellino, thank you for the summary.
Okay.
A problem. It's important that public understands.
We have ordinances and we also have an ABC matter and the attorney for the licensed, uh, the new owner is on the call. I don't know if you want to go there first.
Yeah.
It'll take a very short time if we do that.
Right.
Yeah.
So Megan, yeah. Jeanette is on the call. I don't know if you want to bring her over or?
Yes, I can bring her over.
Can I make a motion to go to ABC?
Second.
Do we have to have a motion to go to ABC if it's on the agenda?
Yeah, because you're coming out of the regular council meeting.
Right, 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 right. So sorry, I'm very tired, so. Okay.
I've not, I've not done an ABC hearing, so is it recorded? And the public view?
Don't, don't worry about it. It doesn't matter. It's okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'm sorry, Michelle, you made the motion. Was there a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so ordinances on second and final reading. Ken, did you want to address?
Yeah, yeah, the first ordinance that's on second and final reading really needs to be on, or reintroduced, um, on first reading.
Interruption because I just, I went through this and I believe it is our final. Karen, I don't, I think that this is the final draft that was reviewed.
It is, but that's the, but that's the problem. The problem is the final draft is different than what was introduced on March 1st. So, and I'm going to explain, you know, the, the, the problem is that when this was, when this initially came on, on March 1st, if you will recall, um, there were some changes made by the council, some recommendations for different language, some additions. And there was some question at the time about, that I had about whether they were material and substantive enough to, to, to justify a reintroduction. And maybe if that was the only, those were the only changes made, I'd have a different view, but there were more changes made. Because Mr. Hess, when he went back to, to remake the ordinance, spoke with Lenny Lepore and they agreed that there were some other things that needed to be done. I mean, they did them and they, so there, there are some significant differences between the ordinance that you, that you've read that's on for second reading and, and the ordinance that was introduced. And that's a problem. So we don't want to have a situation where the ordinance is challengeable because of a procedural error. So what I'm going to ask you to do is instead of having a hearing and, and adopting this on second and final reading tonight, that you reintroduce it as amended. And it's already been put before the planning board and they've already approved the amended language and recommended that you adopt it as amended. And then pu- put it on for a hearing on the May, at the May 10th council meeting. In the event that we're able to advertise it in sufficient time, we'll have the second and final reading that night. In the event that we're not able to advertise it quickly enough, then it'll be on the second meeting in, in May. Um, and I think either one of those will work and we'll, we'll do the best we can to have it on for, um, the May, May the 10th. Any, any questions about that?
No.
Sounds like a plan.
Well, that works.
Okay. So I'm just going to read the title and then I'll do the motion. So everyone knows what we're talking about. And it's 2678 dash 22, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 25, Section 28 of the General Ordinances of West Orange entitled Steep Slope and Natural Feature Ordinance. Is there a motion to reintroduce as amended on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, ordinances on second and final reading, 2681 dash 22, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 dash 12 concerning street cleaning and maintenance. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
So, okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. This is the time for the public hearing.
Are there any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Please raise your hands and get in the queue.
Okay.
We have Ms. Valdez. Please state your name and address for the record.
Are you going to put the timer on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I, I can't see it.
It's being wonky. Hang on one second. I'm sorry, it's not getting big for some reason.
I, I wouldn't, you know, don't, don't worry about the timer. You, you should go ahead and you can speak. If, if, if this is a, this is a, a hearing on an ordinance, so I'm not, I don't think that the five-minute rule frankly applies. I think if somebody needs to talk longer than that, they probably can. Hopefully they won't at this hour, but.
No, I, I do not plan to talk for that long. Um, frankly, I, I made most of my points I've sent via email and they, most of my questions were not fully answered. My question is, why is this even being introduced? Who wrote this ordinance? Was it Richard Trank or was it another attorney? I also want to know this assessment fee, what, what, where, where exactly are the funds going into? Because there are already fines that can be assessed if someone is parked. The police can come and, and provide that person with a ticket. They can come and tow them. So I don't understand why now we're adding additional fines and a tow. Um, it just seems like this ordinance targets the downtown area, frankly, where I live and where parking has always been an issue. I have emails going back 2018, 2017, 2016 to Mayor Parisi, to Chief Abbott, to the council. And these issues were not really addressed until an ordinance was passed, I believe it was 2017 or 2018, regarding Elm Street, Cherry Street, Chestnut, Franklin, which changed the, um, alternate side parking hours to just one day on one side from nine to one, and then one day on another side, nine to one. You know, parking has always been an issue here. Um, I understand we had the pandemic and there was relax, relaxation of the ordinances in, on the books, but also before that, there was relaxation of the ordinances. My issue, because, uh, councilperson Cindy Matute Brown replied to my email, but I feel that she only replied to certain questions. She basically said that I was complaining about this issue. Yes, I was complaining, you're correct, because the mechanic on Franklin Avenue, which I spoke to Ms. Castellino about, was parking and has been parking cars there, which I've had videos of, I have pictures of. I've called the West Orange Police Department, which I'm sure they have a record of all my phone calls. This is, it's, it's all tracked. Um, so you know, it, it's just getting very frustrating that the, the way to deal with this parking issue is this ordinance, which I, I think it, it, it's not correct. And, you know, I speak for other residents that have come to me to speak about the parking issues and the commercial vehicles. Yeah, I have residents who, who have called me and spoken to me at length about this issue. We're all frustrated and as you can tell, yes, by, by my tone, I am very frustrated because it's been year after year after year. I have lived here since 2003. My house does not have a parking, uh, a, a driveway. And we've dealt with it. But, you know, it, it's like the, it, the issue has not gotten better. Ms. Adams, there was another resident who lives on Park Drive who also said, you know, this is a quality of life issue. She cannot find parking. Most likely she won't want to participate in activities. I know that at one point I was going to, to law school at night and I was coming home at 10, 11 o'clock at night and I was not finding parking on my street. And it was a safety issue too, because then the, also the lamps were out. So, you know, I just feel like this ordinance is not the way to deal with this issue. And perhaps you need to have a community meeting with the residents of this area of town and really focus on the issues and talk to everyone to see if perhaps, just like before, Mr. Parisi had, Mayor Parisi had a meeting at Liberty Middle School. Perhaps we need to have one of, one of those community meetings to deal with the issues and, and actually talk to the community to see how we can resolve this. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? We have Melinda Herrera?
Hello?
Hi, Melinda. Go ahead. State your name and address for the record.
Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Hello?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Melinda Weta, 17, Park Drive South. Um, I was calling in about the parking stress, um, and just kind of reiterating what has already been said about this concern. Earlier I did, uh, mention that fines and violations are not the solution. However, calling in to complain is also not the answer. I have been called on several times. Um, I have four children, two are under four. We're actively in and out of the house all day. We have really long days when we come home and just have to run the risk of getting called on because walking three to four blocks away from our home in the middle of the night is stressful. There are nights when my husband and I stay awake and constantly look out the window to see if anyone has moved so that we could park and not get ticketed. Or as Ms. MK Adams mentioned, is to just refrain from leaving home after five if I was lucky enough to get a, a, a spot where I would not be ticketed. And so I think that, you know, Mel Valdez brings a good point about we need to find a better solution. And I know that's not going to happen tonight, but I, I don't agree with this, um, resolution or this ordinance to, to continue, um, fining residents, um, who have no choice but to get the tickets. As a matter of fact, I probably need to call the police station and see how many overdue unpaid parking tickets I currently have. Because, um, I for certain have, um, several. So thank you and have a good night.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? I'm not seeing any other members.
Council President, I hate to interrupt. I just want to let you know I'm on an eight percent battery life. And I am plugged into the wall, but still at eight percent. Just wanted to let you know that if the screen goes out, I, I, I will try to call back on, uh, login through my cell phone, but that's also on the same charger with 10% battery life.
So, yeah, I mean, listening to the residents and looking at this, uh, ordinance, of course, we want to keep our streets clean, but we're hearing how frustrated the residents are with parking there. So how, how do we find this balance and, and what do we do? Councilwoman Castellino, I'm sure this is a topic of conversation at Downtown Alliance meetings. Maybe you have some more insight for us.
That, that and personal experience, because I also live, live, uh, down in an area where, you know, there's parking, overnight parking and restrictions. So, uh, and I, I, I spoke to Ms. Valdez not too long ago and to hear her. and to hear her frustrations, which she has, you know, some, such a right to be frustrated. Because, you know, first of all, in that area, there's a mechanic. And had a long conversation with the chief, with Ms. Adams, and I mentioned earlier in the evening. And they have to, they're, they're working on being, talking to the property owner, the business owner. You know, parking, you know, vehicles that you're working on, you know, for a couple of days in a row, you know, takes up parking spots for the residents that absolutely need them. So, but the streets also need to get cleaned. So I had asked again, Mr. Lapore through Mr. Gross. And he, you know, he, he was going to go out to revisit all the signage to make sure, because some of the signs may not be worded properly. So he was going to go and, and do that. As far as enforcement, you know, the, the answer is not to pass the ordinance because the streets do need to be cleaned. That, that's also another quality of life issue. But we also are working on the parking, have to continue to work on the parking. There's a lot of people with a lot of cars and, you know, when all my kids were living at home and everybody had their own car, I, I was one of those, you know, I was just like the residents I called in tonight. I, I wouldn't leave my house. My husband thought I was crazy because I didn't want to lose my parking spot that I got for the evening. So, yeah, we have to keep working this. The chief is working on it. And we don't have all the answers yet, but I know one of the answers, you know, and there are people that don't abide, not because they can't find a spot, because some people just don't abide. So I, I think we should pass the ordinance tonight. I think the chief has to continue to work on it. And, you know, just people knowing that we're enforcing it now, they will be more mindful. But again, the answer is not going to be tonight. I agree with Ms. Porto. But the streets do need to be cleaned. So I, I wish Mr., isn't Mr. Lapore, he's not on now, right? I think.
I don't.
Is he on the seat? Yeah, so I, I think we should, you know, get him to talk to us at the next meeting to see what they've come up with him and the chief. I know they've been working on some remedies. But I am going to ask for this to get passed tonight because their enforcement's another thing. They don't have to, you know, and maybe put a hold on the enforcement, but the garbage is everywhere and they have to clean the streets, so.
And I, I, I think it's important, yeah, and I don't think that we're look, going out to use the authority that we have here. Certainly in, on, on a broad basis. But at the end of the day, we certainly, you know, one of the provisions, we need to be able to remove a car if we have to. And right now, we don't have that ability. And so, you know, there, there are circumstances, they're extreme, but they do exist where we, we need to move a car and in this situation, and, and we need that ability.
And, and just to say, because I see everybody's hands up, and I know it's late, just from, from living, you know, in, in this area. You know, one of the major problems is like, people will like take up two spots. Like I said, commercial vehicles have been an issue. There, there's various reasons and it's, it's not just because of the, the, the street cleaning signs. So those, you know, but again, people are forced where they wind up parking in a spot that they shouldn't. So, you know, chief is, like, like I said, has, has got to make this a priority to get this straightened out for residents. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President.
I'm so sorry, I have my hand up. I have six percent battery life. Can I please speak before, before my computer just dies? Councilwoman Williams, do you object?
I do not.
Thank you so much. I, I did have my hand raised first. I appreciate that. Ju- just because I don't ever want a resident to feel that I just stated that they complained. My response was a, a six paragraph email that reads, and I will read it into the record just because I was accused of doing something that just is not correct. As to your assessment that the introduced amendment is redundant, I can't say that I agree, as you yourself has spoken about the continued non-compliance of parked vehicles and have alleged that there is a lack of enforcement, which I also can agree with since you shared concerns about residents being issued violations during the last council meeting. This ordinance serves, as you've copied below, it allows for an additional fine to help ensure compliance. Allows for the West Orange Police Department to enforce towing of vehicles that are non-compliant as well as allows for changing of no parking days and at times to be changed by a resolution as opposed to by first and second reading of an ordinance, which takes considerably more time to implement. I did state that Mr. Gross can address the question as to the assessed fines, because I didn't have the answers to that. I just wanted to put that in the record. Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, for your, for your grace.
Absolutely, no problem, Councilwoman. I'm not going to belabor this. The only thing that I wanted to bring to the table is I, I, I do agree that we can pause this. I understand we do need the ability to tow. But I think we do need to listen to our residents and it does feel punitive when they already have parking issues that we know exist. So I would just like for us to consider what, when we've done this in other instances, before we say, let's get it right, let's get it right the first time. So if we could just delay this, have chief go back, do an assessment, Mr. Lapore go back, do an assessment. See how we can better serve the residents in this community without giving additional assessments and fines. I think we would be listening to the people. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I completely agree with Councilwoman Williams. I don't think there's a fire that needs to be put out tonight. Uh, we can certainly take a little bit more of the time in addressing this, uh, the issue. But let's be more considerate of what the residents in that corridor are talking about and the issues that they're already facing. So I, I am fully supportive of tabling it and not acting on it tonight. I, I don't want to vote it down, but if we have to put it up for a vote, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And I would like to hear what the chief or Mr. Lapore has, if they have assessed this already and what their plan is. They do in fact have a plan to address this issue.
So, so can we table it? Or are we going to vote it down?
I would table it because the streets need to be cleaned. We should address it by the next meeting.
Oh, I'll move to table to the next meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Oh, you're muted. Madam Clerk, you're muted.
So sorry. Councilwoman Castelina? Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I was wondering why you were ignoring me. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I can, Council President, I just want to make one follow-up statement. There are a couple of additional issues that I want to also put on the record and make sure we're aware of. I heard some lighting issues or concerns that may need to be addressed. So we want to make sure we confirm that that's not an issue. And I also heard as a concern, some safety issues. So there again, those just might be some things that we can, you know, walkability downtown, late at evening. If there's anything we can do to assist and support the residents in this corridor, it would be greatly appreciated.
And thank you for that, because I know that there was someone on Cherry Street a few years back that reported two street lights out. And I brought PSENG over there, brought it to their attention, and we found 12 street lights out in that surrounding area. So the lighting and safety go hand in hand. And that would be another assessment that needs to be made. Good, thank you.
Okay, ordinance 2682-22, an ordinance superseding and amending Chapter 22 Taxation subsection 1, five-year tax exemption for certain improvements to residential and commercial structures of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Uh, yes.
Okay, this is the time for public hearing. Any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance? I'm not seeing any. We'll give it.
We have had this conversation before. We had a conversation on first reading. We had it again. We have had this conversation.
Right, so we may be good to go.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not seeing any hands. Thank you.
So do we need to?
Okay.
Move to adopt?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castelina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam, madam, madam clerk?
Yes.
I am recusing myself from this next ordinance and it is timely as I am on three percent battery life. So to my council colleagues, thank you for the grace you've given me this evening to participate in a belabored fashion, but I felt it was important enough for me to join the meeting. So I will bid you all good night to the public. Thank you so much for.
Better and want you safe travels.
Stay safe.
Absolutely. Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, is there a motion, I'm sorry, 2683-22, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Section 8 of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelina?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
This is the time for the public hearing. Any members of the public speak on this ordinance?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay. Any comments from the council? We did have a presentation from the Health Director at our, on first reading. And if you have any comments or questions. He did say he would be available, but I surely don't want to call him. Buck in the morning.
I'll make a motion.
I, I was going to say, I move, we adopt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Castelina?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay, ordinances on first reading, 2684-22, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic subsection 7-19 through streets and 7-20 stop intersections of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castelina?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion? No. Next is pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Not at this time.
Can I just add something for the record? And what, the only is, the only issue that was raised about 2683-22, the one we just passed on second and final reading, I wasn't going to do it because we had went past it, but just for the record, we already have an ordinance regarding diesel trucks or gasoline-powered vehicles from idling. And I'm assuming that that ordinance will apply to these vehicles as well. That, is that not right?
That is council, councilman.
Yes, that was a question that was raised. Councilwoman Castelina, yes.
So I looked into that because that was one of my issues, one of my concerns with this. And the state statute is if the vehicle's being used to refrigerate, the, it's exempt from idling, from the idling, so you don't have to turn it off. So that's, that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
We also did learn that this particular company is looking to go to electric vehicles. So that would, you know, that's another move away from this idling that, that was a concern.
Some of them have an alternative source to some type of a generator, so whatever. But I just wanted to make sure that that was entered into the conversation. It's like 1:30, so we can stop.
You think?
Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, West Orange, for those of you who hung in there with us. This is amazing, incredible. Good night.